I don't see any. We like to start early.
Yes, we start early.
Oh, well, that's fine, but she doesn't need to be here. April, are we ready to begin?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, so with that, I will call the meeting to order. This is a meeting, a regular school board meeting of the Oaks Public School. It's Tuesday, July 13th, 2021 at 7:00 a.m. And we're here at the Oaks Public Schools conference room. It is 6:56 a.m. And I believe the only person we have joining us via Zoom at this moment is April Haring. I'll call the meeting to order and will rise to say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With that, we have the agenda before us. Is this where we should add the item that you and I just discussed?
I think that's probably your thing.
Yeah, I think you're right. Under action items, we're going to add an item B, and that is impala bids. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda that anybody would like to propose for this first meeting, which is the final meeting of the 2020-2021 school year? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda with that one addition?
I'll make a motion.
Rosen Dell moves to approve. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Any discussion? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. I'd like to recognize the visitors we have with us today. We have our two superintendents, our two principals rather, and we have John Zetica from Starion and our new school board member Monica Heimbuck. Is anyone else with us on Zoom now, April?
Nope, just me.
We also have with us our brand new, not a week, almost two weeks. Our, it was the first time I've seen him in the building, that's because I haven't been here. Oh, here comes Dave. As not David, now we have Dave and David. So Mr. Getz is with us, has been here since the 1st of July and has graciously, you know, joined us in various ways prior to that, as I think many new superintendents do as they're transitioning from one to another. So thank you for that and welcome. No other visitors to recognize, so we'll move on to public communication. For that, in your packet, I had actually forgotten this, but shortly after our former superintendent, Mr. Conklin, passed away, I got a text message, I think, from Josh Johnson. And he said, "Do you have that picture of the four of us that was taken?" Oh, Josh has cut off. There. That was taken on May 14th at Cranties in Wapperton at Dan Roode Jr.'s retirement celebration. And that is me with my three previous superintendents and lots of institutional memory lost there with the loss of Mr. Conklin. I asked April to include that. Notice I'm the only one holding a copy. I had to get there before the rest of those guys because you never know. It was good. All right, with that, any other public communications in this packet? Oh, yes, there is a thank you in there from the family. Again, a Perry Klein, Bill's father-in-law who passed away in early May. So we've lost much in the last year. With that, let's move on to the first action item, Starion track agreement. As you recall, for more than a year and a half, two years, we worked on the track project and the sponsorship. We had a number of proposed agreements in front of us. I had expressed some concerns about them. Concerns that we explicitly expressed were addressed by Starion. Track was built, issues with the sign. At the last meeting, we took it up again and there were additional concerns by board members and we did not act on it. So today, in the meantime, I had asked April to research the history, minutes and things, and I, did she send those? Oh, I'm sorry, April, that didn't get sent out. Okay, I had received it and I thought that it probably had gone out. April, would you be able to make copies of that or bring that to the board members?
Yep.
But otherwise, we do have with us today John Zetica, and he would be here to answer any questions. I'm just going to give April a couple of minutes. Yes. Can you?
I can share it here.
Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you. So I'm just going to let you review it yourselves, starting in December 2019. April went through all of the meetings, as many as she could find, and here's the summary. I'll give you a few minutes. All right, with that, everyone's had an opportunity to review that. So my impression was that, you know, the board did express concerns about the 20-year timeframe at each different meeting, or several, at least several times during which it was discussed. But evidently, we did not explicitly request changes to a specific amount of fewer years and/or Craig did not communicate that and it was not addressed. Another concern that Mr. Getz mentioned is we have not evidently had this doc, the proposed document reviewed by an attorney on our behalf. And so those are a couple of concerns that I have. John Zetica is here today from Starion and he, I would like to ask him to share with us his thoughts about where we are and where, what if any adjustments Starion may be willing to make.
Sure, thank you. And here's just some rendering pictures of the proposals signed. First page is the one that's in the front, that would be Long Highway Dawn. The second page would be, there's more coming out. The one that would be on the far east side. So back up to 2019, we made our proposal. We followed the guidelines of what was presented, the premium level of donation. And since then, we ran into some snags with DOT. And we worked through that with cooperation with the city and the school. We got it rezoned, like it was May 17th, I think, is when DOT finally approved it. I see in the minutes here that we did accept our donation back in February with amendments of the name to be Starion Bank Track. We dropped the soccer, we addressed the issue with weather-related events, and I think the smaller donations, we adjusted that. Those were the three concerns that were communicated to us. The last, I guess, special school board meeting minutes that I had received was back in September of 2020. And it was to address the three issues, which I already discussed, the weather, the removal of soccer and allowance of other naming rights with smaller donations. Our proposal also includes the cost of the sign, the power, the maintenance, whatever else it takes to get that sign put up. The only cost to the school district will be the monthly utility.
And that's both signs? Your cost of both signs as far as, in addition to installation, of the signs themselves, as well as the power to the one sign? What, do you have an estimate of what that might be?
We don't have the total electrical because we stopped the process when the school board met last time and did not move forward with the project. So our best estimation is about $38,000 of installation, get the utility or the power to the sign. There's some engineering costs and things of that nature. So we'll have about $88,000 invested into the sign.
Any other questions?
We've done multiple projects like this in other communities. You're probably familiar with the one in Mandan, which was a larger one. That was for 25 years, the one in the Fargo baseball field in Fargo was 20 years. We did a building in Flasher, and that's the lifetime of the building. There's another project in Saltland, North Dakota, and I think that's 20 years. You look around our community, what Starion's giving back, you know, the Starion Swim Center. We didn't do that for five, 10, 15, that's for the duration.
What was our final, do you have any ideas what the final numbers on track was? It was 280, you know, what, 300,000 of there at one time? I don't know what the final numbers came up.
In the January 2020, on the first page here, it says that we approved the project of 289, 241. I'm not sure if there were additional costs.
It's reapproved. I hope we came in on that.
And there were a few additional smaller donations.
Yeah, there were. 68 other ones at least, some personal, some business. John, I appreciate the 50,000, that's, I was missing all girls' downs coming because we were, other businesses were coming forward, you know, with bids and everything went dead. And the track was already lying to be, you know, done last summer, and it was. Because we were looking at that time more of a complex, at the football field. And it was a big, big idea. So that's why it was a second. Again, 50,000, beautiful. I liked the offer, but it's one of those for 20 years. If the next board, 10 years from now, we have an issue where we ever do the track or they want to go with that exclusive naming rights, does that limit them from getting banked north or pretty or something to come in there? That's my line of concern. You know, I appreciate everything Starion's done for the community. It's this for 20 years for 50 grand out of a $300,000 project, 15%. You get exclusive naming rights and right of, I think you would work with other businesses if five, 10 years down the line, they decide to move forward with the stoplights. I don't want to tie the hands of rich people and say for 50 grand, we can't really raise money again. But not we, the old school district. I don't know what that would be. That's, that's my issue. I just don't want to tie hands of future boards of trying to expand that project down there.
Where are you at with that? Do you have other donations coming forward?
This goes back to when they had the committee. I mean, that was Steve Dalsch was on it from another bank. There were, we were getting close to dealing with other bigger businesses, banks, and then shut the world down. That was in March of 2020. So, yeah, it's, and that's, because there was, we were talking about from anywhere from the, if we were, we wanted a football field down there. You see, the track complex, you could have named the football field. You could name the grandstands, there's the ways to market, all this stuff. It just fell apart. And it's not your fault, anybody's fault, they just shut the world down on us. And that thing collapsed, whether it's good or bad, it just, it's what happened. And then we just started, they did the tracks around budget, around tighter to get it done last spring, which the track's done, but the rest of the projects are in the middle. And I'm not saying anything against Starion, I'm just saying, does that tie? I'm done here and a half, or when we're done. The future boards are trying to raise money again to say, we want a football field down there.
If somebody, another business raises money or makes an offer and we have the right to first refuse them, we pass on it, then it's the next business, whoever comes up with the dollar amount. So I think it's pretty easy, self-explanatory within the contract. And I would certainly advise you to have your attorney review it as well and just be prudent to do that. But I guess, based on our other projects and other communities, I don't think that would weigh very much on the 20 years. That's where, I hope it's not a deal breaker because I think this is good for the community, good for the students, good for the school. And I think we've addressed all the issues. I guess this was really, other than the last conversation I had with Dr. Steinhoff, this is the first time I really knew that there was an issue with 20 years. I could have addressed it sooner.
I have an email that I had asked April to share with me what all the expenses were for the track. And for, over the two, last two-year period, the total expenses, including the Fisher tracks, Dakota improvement, and then a sound system, which I don't think, probably the sound system was in the original budget, but the total is $318,0924. There we go, she's got it up there, as well as the additional donations that were received or pledged. I noticed Starion's is blank there because it hasn't been received or finalized. So with that, we have before us a proposed, thank you, John. If you'd like to sit down, that's fine. If others have questions, we can bring them back up.
Sounds good. Thank you.
With that, we do have this agreement before us. What are your thoughts, Mr. Getz?
I guess, kind of hearing everything and then coming in from the outside, to me, you guys have a choice to move forward or you don't. It's your call with, because of this agreement, it's not finalized. I definitely would have the lawyers look at this, just to make sure that everything is kosher that way. From after hearing John, it sounds like you're still able to go out and do, succeed with what you're looking to do. I think you're, everybody's on the right track. It's just make sure all the legal documents are taken care of. I think that would be my only concern, is making sure there's legal opinion before. And I'm guessing John's probably going to want to say it on his side too.
I think John has that on his side. Their attorneys drew it up and they, you know, it's in our court. I don't know if, if the attorney that we've used for other matters is the appropriate attorney for us. I'm not sure if this is in her wheelhouse or if she's...
If not, I could probably talk with, I've worked with Chrissann Norby-Jonner quite a bit and I know her law firm is quite large. I know there's avenues almost in every direction there, so I could also reach out to her. I know she's probably a little bit more expensive than what you're normally used to. But if India's not able to do this within her, on her firm, then I would, I definitely have other people that we could talk to and I'm almost positive that Chrissann would have something of this nature.
Okay, so having said that, board members, what are, what are your wishes with regard to this agreement? And this generous gift that we have? I would like to just move forward with it. Have an attorney look it over, make sure everything's kosher for the school. I don't think it's fair at this point, never once taking it back to Starion that we were concerned about 20 years, so even if it's going to change that. We accepted it back in February, your gift. I think it's just a legal issue at this point. Okay, so is there a motion then to approve the, or it, so that maybe we can get resolution? Now, I'm saying this and then in reality, the attorney is always going to find something.
They interrogate it.
Yeah. Suppose that Mr. Getz can take it to our attorney or a different attorney and they're able to approve it with very modest, minor adjustments or none. If we can approve this so that Starion can go forward and get their sign ordered and get their, the rest of their contracting with installation and electrical and whatnot, rather than having to wait for another meeting? If, I'm not, I'm not pushing that, I'm just saying that for, in the best interest of getting it done, if a motion could be to approve this agreement pending review by our attorney. All right, Nagel moves to approve the Starion naming rights agreement pending...
Do you want to be contingent on?
Contingent upon approval by Oaks Public School Attorney. Is there a second? Oh, sorry. Four seconds. Now, is there any discussion? Certainly there, an attorney will find something. How much contingency, if there's any concern that... Well, I think we'll need to leave it to your discretion. I would like to be able to tell Starion to move forward. However, if there are concerns that you don't think, that are not able to be addressed.
And I'm going to guess there probably isn't going to be a whole lot. There's going to be probably minor changes. As I look through it, I don't think there's anything that's really tied in your hands, but obviously it means something easily missed. I think that a lawyer is going to look at it and just more so make sure everything's in the legal aspect, which if a lawyer's already drawn it up, there probably isn't going to be a whole lot difference. It could be something as simple as they come back and say, yeah, this does look legit and there's nothing that's tying your hands that you're going to get yourself in legal trouble. That's what they're going to look for.
All right. All right, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. The motion passes. And thank you, John, and thank you, Starion, for this generous gift. You can tell that we are not professional fundraiserers, nor do we have one on our staff. And so we, we were muddling through this as best we can in what was a very difficult school year. So we appreciate your patience with us and we appreciate all that Starion's done for our community. So thank you for that. All righty. Have a good day.
Yep, thanks.
The next item, which we added to our agenda, is impala bids.
We did. So do you want me to kind of start with a little explanation?
Sure, I'll leave that to our...
Okay, so unless April wants to come over and do that.
I can talk from here.
Why don't you explain the bids and then we'll go from there?
Okay, so I'll share my screen here. So we advertised for the impala with a minimum bid of $5,000. That was changed at the June meeting. We hadn't heard anything. And then yesterday, I received an email from somebody that put in a $2,500 bid. Shortly after that, we had a staff member submit a bid for $2,800. So there's a few options we can have. One, you can take the lowest bid or the highest bid, whichever one. Or we can put it back out for sealed bids and maybe change the minimum, since right now the minimum is five, so we can do that. Kind of up to you. Dave, I'll let you kind of explain further the options.
Just because of the way this is shaped down a little bit and it's underneath the dollar amount of what you requested, I think, to be fair to everybody in the public, if we're going to accept a bid more than what you actually were putting out, I think it should be put out there either with no reserve or a different reserve so that that way, everybody has that fair chance at that. If you're going to accept one of these bids, it could simply make a lot of people upset because they didn't have that same fair chance. So I think a sealed bid with either no reserve or lower reserve would be recommended. Obviously, you've seen some bids here, so maybe you can lower it to a closer bid, a lower reserve of what you have here as an option.
I think that's my last part of this meeting, saying I would just do it, no reserve, see what you get. Obviously, it's amazing because we know what the market's like out there for cars this tight. Well, that's what it is.
Another option you do have is you could probably throw it out and like, I know in the past I've sold buses on Bismann and we've gotten closer to the price that we've asked. So if you wanted to do that, you could also look, that is another option. But then you're becoming somebody more like Dave is probably going to be showing that car off to anybody that comes down to look at it, so, which I think you're doing that already, aren't you? So it wouldn't change much. It just gives you more options to throw it out there, but I'm a little concerned that if you would accept a bid, you're going to make some people upset.
Okay, would you like a motion to that effect?
Yes, please.
What are the wishes of the board?
The motion to keep it going, no reserve.
Okay, Schmitz moves to offer the impala for sale on sealed bids with no reserve, bids to be opened at the next board meeting, which is...
Next break.
August.
You've got to be careful if you want to have a lot.
August 10. And that's okay with the budget calendar, right, April? All right, so is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Rosen Dell seconds. Right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. You have in your packet, actually, four policies of five that are, were for second reading. of five that are, were for second readings. The fifth one, we had set aside for not... Well, it wasn't going to have a second reading and then we moved it to have a second reading. I'll tell you that the first one, FGA, Student Education Records and Privacy, when I started reading this yesterday, I recalled that, it must have been back in 2015 when we, like, last amended this. I think we had quite thorough discussion on it. And, you know, if we look at what is being underlined, the underlying language in here is being added. So what we would do here is we would add additional information, student information that is not to be held private. Is that what I'm understanding? So, or not, not as closely held private. So currently, our policy reads that directory information, which is not, which we can release, is dates of attendance, degrees, honors, and awards received, grade level, most recent school attended, name, participation in officially recognized activities in sports, and photograph. Now, we would be adding to that, address, date and place of birth, school email address, telephone listing, and a student identification number, which I don't think we have.
There is in power school.
Okay. So I'm not, and maybe I'm reading this wrong. Maybe, maybe those items are becoming more protected.
That's the way I read it.
You do?
Yeah. But I could be reading it wrong. Easily could be reading that because it's saying safeguards, you're putting some safeguards into place. Up at the top. It's ensuring information is appropriately protected and used to serve as the best interest of the students.
But here, under definitions, we're identifying directory information. And I think directory information is information that can be shared.
I agree with that, too.
Okay, so...
I missed that part, sorry.
I have concerns about this, that, number one, by approving this and adding all of those other things, really, it's saying, okay, now we can publish all our students' email addresses and give them out to, to everyone.
Where does this come from? That they want to add this additional information to school boards?
Okay, so yes, but, but I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, April, the information that's bracketed is what, we're, we're to make a decision. Do, okay, the, the bracketed information here is what is already in our policy. So dates of attendance, so...
They can't get a hold of them on what you, the address and phone number and stuff. I don't think that should be a part of, like, can be released.
Right. So, so what's underscored is what we're proposing to add to our policy to define as directory information and say, yep, let's, you know, let's put it all out there. And I don't like that.
Yep. So the underlined items in blue are the suggested additions by School Board Association, which we do not have to include. We can strike those.
Seems odd that we're adding more.
Right. And further... And further, here, we're already identifying as directory information, name and photograph and honors. And we, in practice, are, you know, when we put a student on the website, for example, had a couple of students who did well at state trap shooting a few weeks ago, we don't even put their names and their pictures on together, even though our policy allows for it. And I haven't liked that either because I feel like, you know... No, we don't need to, no. So I, I, I propose either we strike out all the stuff that's underlined, at least on this page, or we set this aside for further review for another meeting.
I say strike it out.
Yeah, strike it out. What's going to change?
Okay, let me look at my notes. Well, we already do that.
They're just adding teams.
On the second page, April, there's a, a word I'm not familiar with, viewpoint, that underscored blue. What is viewpoint in items?
Hi, okay, so TLA, something came up with that because they were doing law last semester and this semester they were doing political and stuff like that. That is actually in line with the law that you can give out. That's part of directory. You know, you can give out anything that's under directory and that is in there, which, that shocked me because I didn't think we could give out that stuff, but that's actually in line with the law. And I think, I think that's probably where it's coming down with, that under the law, you can release those. So I'm wondering if maybe schools are being challenged by that because that's the law.
We, we can.
Can, yeah.
But we also have, it's bracketed information here and, and that's whenever there's brackets on our policy templates, we get to decide if, if, if it's required by law, the School Boards Association would make us put it in there.
Okay, but addresses isn't in brackets. Was that just a...
But that's already, oh, address.
And either is telephone listing.
No, it's underscored. So, okay, so in this case, the underscored language is what they're proposing that we add, but I think it's, it's still our decision.
And I think, coming back to what Anna was saying, is that if we're adding this, I think the challenge is coming from probably your colleges that are doing recruiting. That's where your challenge, because if a college would come to us and ask for information on a student, all we can give them is the date of attendance, degree honors. We can't give them addresses or email addresses or anything so that they can actually get in contact with them. We can't do that.
But I'll say this. I mean, you got through it.
It, it still happens.
David gets contacted, Nicole gets, it's going to get this.
It still happens, but that's where the challenge is coming from, yeah.
I'm protecting our kids at this point, saying, well, they didn't get it from us.
Yeah.
You got it somewhere out there that you didn't want to hear from these people, but they got it anyway.
Right.
That's, yeah, you're right.
And again, also the Army would also be another one. Or the... Just to be aware, that's probably why I just didn't...
All right. So back to my question on the second page, the word, there's a underscored, capitalized viewpoint. So it's, um, hot launch tracking software, viewpoint, district alert. What is, is that something we have? I've never heard of it.
I think it must be a new, whatever parent link was, it must have replaced parent link. So it must have been some type of software that other schools are, they have said that it's okay to use. So it must be like a district alert system.
Well, and, you know, the language in that section says includes, but are not limited to. So if we include it, if, if we exclude it, that doesn't mean it's excluded, right?
Yeah. Yeah, you can, you don't have to.
I guess by leaving it in, it doesn't hurt anything if we don't have it. I have another, okay, if we go down to... The, no, Paul, the pages of the policy are numbered, it's page 20 in our packet and it's under directory information. Item five, directory information. And then it says, "The board approves release of directory information as follows." The first item is bracketed, but it's not underscored. So I believe that that means it's already in our policy that way and we can choose to eliminate it, to remove it from our policy. But we're only talking about directory information, which are those limited items that we've included in the definition up above. And so I'm assuming we're proceeding here not adding any more. We only leaving it at the few items that we already have in our policy. We say that we can publish, publish on the district's website and that includes a photograph and name and an honor that a student received. And we're currently not doing that. We're, we're behaving more restrictively than what our policy indicates. And then my question here is whether we should include, if we say publication on the district's website, if we should add, and social media accounts because we publish on Facebook, we publish on Twitter, we publish on an app. So in my view, those things should be added in this one, or a separate one. So with that, board members, do we want to, to, to set this one aside or do we want to flesh it out today and act on it? Okay, so, changes that we're proposing, correct me if I'm wrong. In the definitions, directory information, we would leave the definition of directory information the same as it currently is, which means we would not include address, date of birth, school email address, student identification number, or telephone listing. Everything else would stay just exactly as it is now.
Yeah.
Okay. The word viewpoint can be left on the next page because we may not have it. I checked, we do have that board regulation, information release safeguards. And we would add in, uh, that we can share directory information in other ways in addition to the district's website, which unless, unless our, all those social media accounts are considered our website, I would add social media accounts and school app. All right. So those are the changes from what's in your packet that we will use. Or why don't we just act on this one and we'll act on the others separately? That's more clear. So is there a, a motion to approve as a second reading, policy FGA with the changes that we just discussed? Schmidt's moves to approve FGA with changes. Is there a second? Four seconds. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Now, the other three are... Four, rather. GCC. HDD, KBA, and then GABC was not in your packet but was sent separately. So were there any questions or concerns about those as second readings? If not, is there a motion to approve those four as second readings and final adoption?
I'll make a motion.
Rosendahl moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Four seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries and those four policies are adopted as prepared, as presented in our packets for final adoption. All right. Moving on to approval of minutes of the June 7th meeting, those were in your packet. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Schmidt's moves to approve the minutes of June 7th. Is there a second? Nagel's seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Let's take the first three reconciliation, balance sheet, and revenue and expense report as presented in your packet. Were there any, anything you want to highlight, April, or any questions, board members?
Um, I put most of the notes on the report to show, you know, why they were over budget or under budget or, well, mainly over budget. And they explain like reimbursements and stuff.
Is this all inclusive now for the fiscal year, April, or is there some outstanding bills?
Nope. This was after I ran the final bill from the final payroll of the year.
Any further questions or discussion? Is there a motion to approve the reconciliation, balance sheet, and revenue and expense reports, finals of 2021? Nagel moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Rosendahl's seconds. Any further questions, discussion, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. The pledge of assets report came separately to you yesterday. Oh, is it in the packet? Okay. I think my packet, I think was that added to the packet after I started looking at the report? All right. Well, anyway, is there a motion to approve the pledge of assets report?
That'd be cool.
Schmidt's moves to approve. I get it. Nagel's seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Pledge of assets report is approved. That leaves destruction of records, annual transportation, year-end financial reports, and leave summary. Let's take those one by one. The destruction of records report is, was prepared by April. Presumably, she has reviewed what's required to be retained and what is able to be destroyed. This is what she's presenting to us. Is there a motion to approve and that these records be destroyed?
I'll make the motion.
Rosendahl moves to approve the destruction of records resolution. Is there a second? Schmidt's seconds. Is there any discussion, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next, we have the annual transportation report. This one, we used to get every single month when I started on the board. So with that, you see a very nice summary of all of our buses, our fleet, I guess not our, not our cars, but, um... I, I did notice one thing and that was that last month we approved a clean diesel grant and we were going to use that to replace bus seven, which is a 2000 bus, which, and we still have a 1991 and a 1998. Oh, no, that's the taxi, the 1991 bus, but perhaps that doesn't qualify for the clean diesel destruction.
91 is too old.
How old? How old can it be?
I would say it kind of changes every year, but I believe...
The 91 is too old. I think the cutoff was 98.
Well, we, we did the taxi, which was a 98, so...
Yeah. Taxi is right at the cutoff, so that's why we are worried if we waited to the next round that it wouldn't qualify for the age.
All right. Any other questions about the transportation? All right, any other questions about the transportation report? Have you ever used bus eight?
I think I get like 42 miles on it this year.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say it's on air.
So it was Friday day when there was like four or five trips that went out, and I was struggling. I needed eight bus, and that was there.
And it started.
We have it. It starts all the time. I got no computer and I have to drain batteries.
You better keep that one.
We've got the cheapest average bus.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the transportation report? Nagel moves to approve. Is there a second? Schmidt seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Year-end financial report. Do I have that in my packet?
No, I didn't get that done. It's due like in August 30th, so I'll have it for the next meeting.
Okay, so that's not, oh, I know which one you're talking about, the one that has the DPI.
I have it done. I just haven't went through it, so I'm not comfortable having you guys approve it yet.
So we'll defer action on that. We will not act on that. It's not in our packet. And then last year, we started asking, because this board only, only the two employees, the superintendent and the business manager, report to this board, so we, we ask that we, they report to us what their leave, what leave was taken, just, just to be accountable to the board. And this is a lot of information, April. Could you just summarize it for us, please?
You're muted.
You're muted. We can hear you. Thank you.
I would, I would do the report from our leave program online, but with COVID and teleworking, it was a mess. So this is just a screenshot of our payroll software. So it just shows each month how many, how many hours were used. And then, so all the different leave is listed here, other sick and vacation, and then we also had telework and emergency COVID leave this year. And then I started tracking district required too. So it just kind of shows other leave for Craig. This is how he used it. Same thing here for vacation, which is highlighted and how many he used. But I printed this before his final payroll, so he did use up all this leave, so the ending balances of the year were zero. And he opted not to have his vacation paid out to him. So basically, it was zero. And then this is me. I zeroed out all of my leave too because of my awesome year that I had. But anyways, so personal leave, sick leave, and vacation, and again, it just kind of shows when it was taken each month. So I was zeroed out at the end of the year, too.
All right, with that, is there a motion to approve the reports of our administrators' leave?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thorp moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Schmidt seconds. Is there any discussion? I would just say that with both Craig and April, at any time when I called them, wherever they were and whatever, whether they were working, teleworking, in the office, out of the office, on a hunting trip, or on the road, they answered me. And so in this, in this age and world where the, where the world of work and vacation and leave is so blurred, I encourage our administrators to take some time away. It's good. But I do appreciate that they're always, they're always available to us. So thank you for that. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. One more item, the review of bills, and these are, these are the final bills of 2021 school year, correct?
Yep, for the most part. So there were the bills that we had to pay at the end of June for the last fiscal year, and then there is a few that are for the current fiscal year. But otherwise, like the MasterCard, everything of that, I put it at the last fiscal year.
Okay, any questions? See, we're paying a bond. How many more years do we have to pay up bonds? Three?
2024, I think, is the first, is the, 2023, 24 is when the first one comes off. So another two years.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the bills as presented? Nagel moves to approve. Is there a second? Schmidt seconds. Any discussion? Any questions or discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. The motion passes and the bills are approved. I just have two things for the good of the order at this meeting. First of all, April, our business manager, has completed successfully the business manager certification program, which I knew she would, in, as we all know, a very difficult year professionally and personally for her. And so thank you and congratulations. Very well done. And we have Bill Schmitz, a retiring board member. He would love to stay for the next meeting. I know he wants, in fact, I know what he's gonna do. He's gonna rush back to his office and get on Zoom right away so he can.
I'll be watching you.
Thank you, Bill, for your work in three years on the board.
I got like four, because last year was like two.
Any favorite memories you want to share?
I wish you best luck, and I'm not going anywhere. But then, a little more free time to be chasing a boy.
Omar, when does she leave?
Month from today. No, not going anywhere. With all support on the board, so.
Thank you.
And you can come back and complain. I get your emails.
Got all our numbers. Thank you. Anyone else have anything for the good of the order? We'll take about a five-minute recess, and this concludes the 2021 school year. Thank goodness for that. Let's have a good one coming up. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Three can be at 9:00 AM.
See you later, Bill.
I mean, 8:00, sorry. She's not outside the five minutes. She's got two minutes. Do you remember why Cory was gonna give us a trade on that?
3500.
He was like. But then we ended up and got a beat ball for last.
Right, right. No, I was just thinking, so are we gonna lose it, you know? Thanks for that, but yeah.
Something like that. There's a couple different offers.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Oh.
And was there something on that that was on the website?
That's not sitting there. I'm like, who hit something?
She did an oil change.
No, no, that new car.
The new car.
New car. On our website?
I know they have one of those.
Was there something wrong? That it was on the beach ass?
Chair. Oh.
I saw it sitting there. I was like, what the?
Call the meeting back. We're here for the first meeting of the 21 through two school year, and we'll start off with the oath of office. We had changed up a little bit, and we'll actually do all this in the meeting this.
So if you want to read your oath and sign it, then I'll know directly. I, Sonya Meal of Oaks, North Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of School Board Member according to the best of my abilities. So help me God, under pains and penalties of perjury.
You're not supposed to read it with a question.
It has been painful at times.
I, Monica Hindbeck of Oaks, North Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Office of School Board Member according to the best of my abilities. So help me God, under pains and penalties of perjury.
Thank you.
Welcome to the board, the new members. So the next order of business, let's try it again. Next item on the board item is to elect the president. So I'll take nominations, open the floor for nominations for president.
I nominate.
You're gonna nominate yourself? I nominate Sonya.
We have a nomination for Sonya. Any more nominations for president? Any more nominations for president? Hearing no other nominations, we'll cease to, let's see if I can say it right. Motion to cast an unanimous ballot for Sonya as the next board president. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda then is to elect a vice president of the board. I forget who was their vice president. Was it Bill? It was Bill. He's gone. So are there nominations for vice president? I mean, really, I've never missed a meeting. I will nominate Ryan. Sheila Nagel nominates Ryan. Is there a second? Or is, are there any additional nominations? Are there any further nominations? Hearing none. I will call for a vote for a unanimous ballot for Ryan Rosendahl as vice president on our board. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Go on. Motion passes. Robert.
Yeah, I did.
All right, so you have an agenda. You have a lengthy agenda before you. Are there any additions to this agenda that you brought to mind?
The activities handbook. We need to do a first reading.
And so we'll put that. Where shall we put the other person? Okay, we have ABC, second, yeah, we'll put it under D. We'll make D one activity, first reading of activity handbook. Help me remember when we get there. Anything else? If not, is there a motion then to approve the agenda with the addition of the first reading of the activity handbook?
I'll make a motion.
Rosendahl moves to approve the agenda. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes and the agenda is approved. So we start out with our packet, the TLA enrollment. There is an item in your packet. Okay, I'm there now. Is everyone then on page? Well, I might not have the same packet you guys do because there was a couple things missing.
I'm on the one that you have.
It was probably the one I posted prior for my vacation.
Robert and I were on the ball when we were working on our packets last week, right? Okay. So we received an email from Katie Johnson requesting and stating that she would be withdrawing from the TLA for good reasons, seeking a difference of graduate degrees. So kudos to her, but we will want to accept that, that withdrawal, and she does indicate that she expects to have to repay. Didn't I mean that? And she will pay back what the school has put in. So with that, is there a motion to approve the withdrawal of Katie Johnson from the TLA?
And the repay amount that we had the other student pay was $673.58.
So it should be the same?
Yep.
Yep. All right, is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thorp moves to approve the withdrawal from the TLA. Is there a second? Monica Hindbeck seconds. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion?
The, if so many, well, and if too many withdrawal, I guess, or once it started, they're, they'll finish it out regardless of how many are allowed.
How many students do we have now?
We've got, is there six of us, seven, nine of the? They won't, they'll keep one.
Yes, six from Oaks and three from.
Okay, where am I? I'm blank. I'll look that up. I'm on some. Well, we appreciate you being.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. The 2021-22 preliminary budget and hearing date. April, what guidelines can you give us for that?
So that's the regular preliminary budget hearing. So it has to be in, basically in the month of September. I think it's like August 20th through September 30th. You have to have a date. So typically, what we'll do is we set the date for after our September meeting.
So immediately following.
Yep. Yep, so we kind of throw the time out there at 8:30. That's typically gives us a break in between the meeting and next. So it'd be September 14th at 8:30 AM.
Okay, presuming that we, you know, the board has yet to set our regular board meeting day and time, which we'll discuss later, but shall we say that we'll set it immediately following our regular September board meeting, which is yet to be determined?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and that. So, so go through our budget calendar now. By August 10th, we have to certify our preliminary budget and submit it to the county, correct?
Yeah, with our hearing date. Yep. And then we prepare the notice and send the notices out to all the taxpayers. And then we have to hold a budget hearing in that timeframe, that 30-day timeframe, and then the final adoption is in October. So we have to have the final approved budget to the county by October 10.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to set the preliminary budget hearing date as immediately following our regular September board meeting. Is that appropriate? Nagel makes that motion. Is there a second? Thorp seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is the second reading of the student handbooks. The first one in our packet was the, or is, is the seven through 12 handbook. I did send a couple of questions to Mr. Bada yesterday, so we'll start with those. I don't remember what my questions were. Oh, yes, I do. Alternative program.
Yeah, the alternative program. Mainly, intended ad libe was credit recovery. If I go to alternative program, I can read I don't have a really set of criteria. I think that's something that's just been in the handbook for years and years that hasn't really been looked at much closer, but there's no alternative program that I'm aware of other than credit recovery for students that failed a class.
I would say that would also probably fall into, as I read that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say it also probably follows a little bit with the classes that are from North Dakota Center of Business. but I would say it also probably follows a little bit with the classes that are from North Dakota Center of Business Center. If a kid was taking a class for credit through North Dakota Center of Business Center because he don't operate in house or an alternate reason of why they opt to, it's just giving them approval to do that. That, and what I was seeing it?
Okay. I think my second question related to high school graduation requirements and the possibility of re-adding health. We had, I think I either had a conversation with you or we talked about it in a board meeting. What are your thoughts about that?
I think I'll still work with Mr. Getz on this. It's still, it's still part of the graduation requirements. Like you can still take half a semester of health and a semester of P E. Or just one full year of P E. I'd like to work with, with Mr. Getz on some ideas on that. I don't think it really requires a board directive because it's just basically the classes that are offered and it's just a matter of decision. We're gonna require like all freshmen to take it or we'll leave it as an elective. But we have some options there both where we can teach in-house or through distance ed. So I'll work with Mr. Getz on that.
Yeah, I just recall, I don't know, three or four years ago when we reviewed our graduation requirements and we noted that, well, the state of North Dakota did not require health for graduation. Oaks Public Schools did. And the board at that time decided, well, if the state doesn't require it, then we're not going to require it. Now, since then, with, you know, mental health, a pandemic, you know, other issues, I have rethought, maybe, maybe we should go back to requiring it. Or maybe there are alternatives, you know, as you said, they can take it as an elective or maybe there are other means of educating students about that without requiring class. But that's why I brought that up.
Yep, and we have to offer it by law. It just now, the way we've done in the past, if a student wanted help, they would just take it online through distance ed. But we might have some options coming forward for this year now, so.
Okay. Any other questions? I have one more, but it's kind of fiddly.
Mine is also. I just, under the tornado time, it says in the last sentence that students in good standing will be allowed to leave school at Friday at 3:30.
Yeah. Should have been 3:00. Wait, should I be getting an email? So I'm like, I'm just going through the board bag here. I hope I have service to respond, you guys. So it looked like I'm pretty good.
You just put that in there.
I always just check it out. I updated that. You're on screen. Hey, you guys are doing great. You're still in school, so.
The other thing you mentioned to our board handbook is on page 11, under the non-discriminatory, non-discrimination policy, Dr. Seinhardt's name is still included over there, so that should be changed.
Since around that tornado time. So you needed 20 minutes in the schedule to match the center, is that what?
That schedule is the same as all ITB schools and the center. So the center goes to 303 like all other ITB schools do. So if you have a home or a flex model, if a kid was taking like human anatomy last hour, their class ended at 303. And so going back to that schedule, that last 20 minutes just fills our day out compared to what other schools have. Some other schools might end at 303. We always go to 325. And so that'll be time for, kids will be broken up into advisors. And those advisors on Wednesdays and Thursdays, I have a ramp up to readiness program. So they'll learn some study skills, learn things on how to prepare for whether they're going to college, two-year, four-year, or the workforce, the military. They get some of that interaction that West, it wasn't West State, it was Advanced at the time. It's cognitively now set for the high school. That was an area of improvement for us that we need to do a better job of having deeper connections with our kids. And we've lost that while with Flex Mike's kids who were in and out at different times. So that's that time that will be occurring on Wednesdays and Thursdays. And if you're wondering, well, what are they gonna do on Mondays and Tuesdays? That'll be like a study hall or just checking in with them on how the grades are doing and doing a check-in for them to last 20 minutes. And Fridays, if the kids are in good standing, have the grades in order and everything turned in, then they'll be released at 303.
So they'll move classrooms then, or they just stay in the classroom that they're in?
It depends on where they would be. So like if, if they're whole, it'd be like a homeroom. So if I have students that are homeroom with me, but some of them are in gym and some of them are in art, whatever, they'll just come to me.
Okay, my final question was, I noticed, I wasn't gonna bring this up, but then I noticed it was in the handbook. Graduation honor stalls. Interestingly, a parent brought this to my attention within the last few days that our honor stalls no longer say honor. That was brought to my attention like immediately. And so, and I don't know when that changed.
It didn't. I, as soon as I got your question, I texted Carrie, I'm on the board. And I'm like, hey, what, did we always have honor on there, right? And she goes, yep. She goes, I just like to look like this or the other one. Didn't even, I didn't even notice it when we went through graduation, graduation practice. So it wasn't something we changed intentionally just to screw up on our org and souls. But you're right, they should say honor.
Okay, and additionally, this has bothered me for a number of years. I can't remember when it started that all students, all graduates got a stall. And, you know, I happen to bring the graduation pictures. And if you look at this, everybody looks like an honor student, don't they? And, and it's not like the honor students have a nice gold one and the rest are black or white or something. They're orange. And that has bothered me for some years because I, I mean, what's wrong with, if you're an honor student, you get a stall? And if you're not, you don't.
That's easy to fix. I don't know how long everybody's had a stall with that background. I have no problem if you're in an honor stall, you're the one wearing a stall and everyone else has just three gold ones on call that are missing.
And I don't know that that needs an adjustment to the handbook, but, you know, it was brought to my attention and others, obviously. So, I mean, I'm glad we have the opportunity to address it. Any other questions for Mr. Bada on the seven to 12 handbook? If not, let's move on to Mrs. Sell and the elementary handbook.
Sonia, her not honey, but she had a question about K through six. So I just kind of changed the wording of it. I put in grades K through three, the students staying where, what they wore from school, plus gym shoes. Students in grades four through six are encouraged to have some type of gym shorts, t-shirt, gym shoes, towel. And it suggested that they shower after gym class. The gym shoes need to be native, non-marked, so souls. I know we would prefer, and I think the teachers would prefer that they change clothes and shower, but at that age, it's really hard to get them to do that at all times. But it sure makes the rest of the day rather smelly when they don't, you know?
The other thing that it's doing there too is it also helps with teaching the proper hygiene. You know, if we're teaching our kids to not shower after they're all sweaty, it's not also teaching.
No. So whereas, I kind of wanted to just leave that, that they're very encouraged to have those. Because they are in, they are in Hyatt for 16 minutes, one of the first hours of the day. Then they go through the rest of the day with the same clothes on. And I realize we're not gonna get them all to do that, but if they would, it would be a lot better for us.
Any other questions regarding the elementary handbook? Second reading. Final approval. If not, other than the changed.
So they're not gonna be allowed to have devices out on the playground?
Right.
They're still allowed to have them in the lunch line and.
Yeah, they, they'll still be able to. I don't think this year that you were gonna, I never see K through three. We don't see it four through six because sometimes the line gets fairly long, so they have them. So they, we are gonna allow them to have them in the lunchroom. But this year, we're gonna change enough our schedule so they don't have as long in the lunchroom. So I don't think we're as need as much as, it's amazing the status of this for those kids at that age in four through six.
Why they even have them to be on the, that's a different conversation.
And it is, it may become a problem in the playground this last year because some of them were using them almost as weapons out there. And I mean, in a, in a mental way, like we had kids that were taking pictures of other kids and sending it to parents to tattle on, on other kids. So that's why we decided we're not gonna, they're, we, we're not supposed to have their iPads out there. They have this. Another problem for me is if they're using their school device, that's filtered, right? But this is not filtered. So I would get questions from parents like, why are they on Snapchat during the middle of the day? And I'm, that's on the parents. When they buy this device for their child and they're on their plan, they can get on anything. We have no control over that, you know? So I would, I wish parents would just say they're not gonna send phones with their kids or their devices because we have so much control over it if they're not, that that won't happen. Because almost every kid in four through six, the main thing has one of these.
Making them check them at the door and they can pick them up when they leave, but.
But we're a one-to-one school, so why do they need them in the first place?
Exactly.
If there's a concern or troubles or anything like that, they should be coming to the office or, doesn't every classroom have a phone as well? So I'm not quite sure, I'm understanding why we have cell phones allowed in the school, period.
It is amazing the progression that we've done.
Should be looking at.
It might be. At this point, I don't wanna make that kind of a change. Send up the door before I get started here, but.
It's amazing, it's a huge issue. Yeah, and it's amazing the progression that we got through because we used to not have phones at all. And then the pressure from parents to have their kids, our, their phones will go off during the middle of the day because parents are calling kids during the middle of the day. And even though they might be in their lockers or somewhere, their phones are going off. And for my kids, I would say nine times out of 10, it's a parent because their peers are in school, right? And they, now in the classrooms, they don't get to have their phones. They can't use their phones unless the teacher allows them to. And then some of the classes, it's used, like in Mrs. Warren's, she'll do poots on it. She'll do, you know, and the kids choose to use their phone because that's their device that they do it. But the backlash from parents when we try to, it's, it's amazing. I bet you, if we took phones away, you guys would be hearing from the minute this board meeting got out. Because it's their right to have their kids with their phones and they wanna get hold of their kids. And yeah, it would be awesome if we could have a phone-free zone in here, you know? But, and then the problem is though, once you say that, you have to discipline for it and you have to watch for it. And everybody has to, and then kids are sneaking their phones. And it becomes where it overcomes everything else, you know? Because then my teachers, they're the phone police. And that's what I always say to them, do you wanna be the phone police? And nobody wants to be the phone police because, you know, you can't even look in their phones. Like if a kid's phone goes off, if it happens to be on my desk, I'll just push it as far away from me as I can because I can't go into that phone and look at it. So it's, yeah, phones are awesome. But phones are an issue too. But then it's also hard because that's for my teachers, that's our main communication. So if something goes wrong in the classroom or like a pair or on the playground, they use their phones. So we all have our phones too, so.
Let's continue to monitor it and, you know, take direction from, from our administrators and we can adjust it later. Okay, and any other questions on the high school or elementary handbook? If not, is there a motion to approve a second reading and final adoption of both the high school, or seven through 12 rather, and elementary handbooks for 2022?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Rosendahl moves to approve. Is there a second? Nagel, seconds. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries and the handbooks are approved. Next is the first reading of the 21-22 Employee Personnel Handbook, which is primarily just links to the online policies. Anything you wanna highlight there, April?
Nope, I went through, made sure all the links worked. And then, as you notice, there's some administrative regulations in there, which are not on the website. And so I kind of highlighted them. And then in the context, they just have to contact me to get a copy of that regulation.
Okay, Mr. Getz, any comments with your experience in other districts or does everything look okay to you?
I mean, obviously I'll still go into this, but for now, I have nothing.
Okay, and again, there's, there's an acknowledgement form which each employee would need to sign. And this applies to both our classified staff as well as our licensed teaching staff.
So anyone who gets a paycheck from me, I make them sign it. So coaches, the hourly staff, classified staff, anybody who, who gets a paycheck. Ultimately, that's part of their payroll forms that I give them.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve as a first reading the 21-22 Employee Personnel Handbook as presented? Nagel moves the approval of a first reading of the personnel handbook. Is there a second? Heimbach, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next, we have, and you received this, I believe, by email yesterday afternoon, the activity handbook. Since we do not currently have an activities director, Mr. Getz reviewed and made a couple of proposals to this. And we're only looking at this as a first reading.
Yep, and I also asked the two administration.
Okay.
They have been here and they know what's.
Yep. I think you made one kind of, oh, now I'm looking at it.
There's a couple. I'm just changing the, under student and a school attendance, it changed, there was a mod still in there, so we changed it to class. Under eligibility, this is kind of a proposal to throw out there. And I've talked with a few people and prior experience, when you start working, as my coaching experience came out in this a little bit, when you have eligibility run from a Monday to a Monday, if you're preparing for a game all week long or a Friday, basketball game, and all of a sudden you have a Monday basketball game, you prepared for that game on Friday and now the kids come in there ineligible and that could end up totally changing your whole game plan. So I would just make it a recommendation to still hold, run the eligibility on Monday, just like normal. So the teachers aren't changing anything on that aspect. But to give the eligibility, the time that the kids would be ineligible would be Wednesday to Wednesday. So that way, you would have that Wednesday practice, make any changes if you need to for the Thursday game. It gives you that time. And I, I know a lot of people said that it really doesn't affect anybody. At this point in time, it hasn't. It's because you don't have games on Monday except for football, the junior high and JV football. But you do have a new AD coming in, quit changing all that. So it just gives that flexibility to where if you do have a Monday game, you're not having to change your whole game plan up during the school day. So that was probably a big change there. And if you have any questions on that, please ask.
I would say we've had Monday boys' basketball games, girls' basketball games, volleyball games, haven't we?
Yeah. Okay, just from what I was told, it doesn't happen, so.
And this is just a first reading. And hopefully, by the next, by our next meeting, I'm hoping that we have an activities director in place and can review and update. I could have one little question. I noticed that it said for cross-country, of course, we're in a cross-country cooperative with Sergeant Central and Legerwood. And that our students would pay, or maybe, and maybe that's in the fee schedule, but somewhere it said that those students, athletes would pay their activity fee to Sergeant Central. And I, I was reminded that, of course, we have a, we have activities, a baseball cooperative with Sergeant Central and North Sergeant. And it's my understanding that those student athletes pay their activity fee to their own school. And that Oaks doesn't charge anything to those districts to participate in our co-op. And so that was inconsistent and I may not be right. So I just asked that you would check that out. And it, I, you know what? I made a note on it, but now what I'm looking at, the notes don't show up, so.
I'll try and find it, but just so that way I can go back and see what it's.
If you can't, then I'll, I'll, I'll have it. Oh, it's under participation fees on page eight of the handbook. The last item for cross-country participants will pay. And that's fine for those students to pay their fees to that school. It just seemed inconsistent with, but we have to follow whatever our cooperative agreement is with the schools. But it might be appropriate to bring that whenever we revisit those.
Yep, and that brings me to the next big thing that I've added into here. A lot of the schools that I've went to over the years, there's always been a cool down period. So that basically after, and I never found anything in here, to where after a game, a parent or a student or participant can't come to the coach and start. and start saying, you did this wrong, you did that wrong, this has to be changed, this has to be, you have to have that cooling out period. So it gives you a 24 hours for our coaches to give them that chance to kind of understand what they did wrong, but it also lets the parents kind of understand that, okay, is this truly something I want to take to or is it not? It gives them that time to cool down so emotions aren't part of this conversation, it's actual conversation. Does that make sense? So that was a big piece that I was adding there as well. I don't think there was much other than that. Do you, Brandon? And Anna? Those were the big changes.
All right, is there a motion to approve this activities handbook as only as a first reading? Monica Heimbach moves to approve the first reading of the activities handbook, is there a second? Nagel, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion passes. Why don't we take E, F, G, and H as a single motion? I don't see anything at all controversial designating the OLS Times as the official newspaper, designating the Guardian, Bank North, and First Credit Union as depositories, designating the Superintendent as the authorized representative for federal programs and as Cheyenne Valley Special Ed Unit Representative. Without objection, is there a motion to approve those four items?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thorpe moves to approve those four items, is there a second?
I'll second.
Rosendahl, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Appoint board representative to the Southeast Region Career Tech Center Board. Sheila Nagel has been our rep for a number of years. It's, I served on that board, it's a very interesting board. Are you willing, able, and desiring to continue on that board? Okay. Is there a motion to appoint Sheila Nagel then to the Southeast Region Career Tech Center Board? Heimbach moves to appoint Sheila Nagel to the Southeast Region Career Tech Center Board, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thorpe, seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion carries. The next item is to appoint a representative to the Dickey County Job Development Authority Board. I think in, in, in practice or in reality, this is a recommendation to the county commission who officially appoints the board and I have served on that board, I think for maybe three years. I am willing to continue in that position. If anybody else would like to do it, please speak up, otherwise I would entertain a motion for appointment of me or whoever.
I'll make that motion to appoint Sonia.
Rosendahl moves to approve Sonia, to appoint Sonia Neal as to the Job Development Authority Board, is there a second? Nagel, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion passes. Now, set the regular board meeting day and time. We have traditionally been meeting at 7:00 AM on the second Tuesday of the month. Is that working for you, April? As far as having things prepared. Board members, sometimes it just seems it's, it's, I, I always say I'd like to have that packet a week before, but even as early as I get it, I rarely look at it until the Sunday before the meeting anyway, so.
I like reviewing it like right before the meeting because then it's fresh, but so it doesn't matter. It wouldn't matter to me if it came out two weeks or three weeks.
As long as it, you need three or four days if you have any questions or anything.
Yeah.
I mean, the times when we get Thursday before Tuesday would be, at least then you got the weekend to look at it.
And, and it doesn't bother me if some items come earlier and then others get added later, but then I, I try to download my packet and it's easier for me to mark up then and save and then, then it gets to be a jumble, but what's going on for me is working. Is there any, any thoughts that we should meet at any time other than 7:00 AM? Is that, is that workable for you?
It's not ideal during harvest, but we will make it work.
Well, Robert loves it during harvest.
Because he doesn't have to come away from it. Well, our, our harvest starts at the end of July, so.
And goes through September?
At the end of October.
Rounds are good. All right, so I'm not hearing any other suggestions, so is there a motion then to continue with our regular board meeting day and time to be the second Tuesday of each month beginning at 7:00 AM? Nagel moves to set the regular board meeting day and time to be the second Tuesday, 7:00 AM, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thorpe, seconds. Is there any discussion? I would just say that I have my regular state board meetings are typically this third Monday or Tuesday if Monday is a holiday and there was some discussion about trying to change that, but that's almost impossible given that Superintendent Beasley is on something like 14 state boards and so trying to change one board meeting for her schedule is very difficult. So if, if that happens, I will try to steer away from the second Tuesday and and from time to time we do change because, number one, at least for the, the election canvassing law, state law said we had to meet six days after, which was dumb and I think has changed, maybe?
Yeah, it's changed to 13 days after. So we'll probably end up having a special meeting just to canvas the votes.
Yeah, and otherwise occasionally something comes up and we do have to change, but we discuss that in advance. All right, is there any further discussion regarding the meeting date and time? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no, motion passes. Then we go to, back to the packet of fees. Lunch, lunch is on the packet, in the packet, but it's not listed.
And I think part of that is because it's free this year.
Is it free to?
All students.
All students but not adults?
Yeah, so USDA has granted another program in which they'll provide free lunches for all students, breakfast and lunch, basically, so there will be no charge to students this upcoming school year, but as prior, the staff, adults have to be charged. So there's, so technically there still is a lunch fee, it's just that we're zeroing it out basically this year. So there'd be no changes in the lunch pricing.
Okay, so we don't even need to act on that, it's not on our agenda, but it is in our packet.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's just on the fee sheet and so, but yeah, so there'd be no changes automatically to those lunch fees.
Okay, board, how do you want to handle this? Do you want to take each item individually? Do you want to discuss each item individually and act on them one time? That seems like it would be an efficient way to go. Thoughts? Our first item is activity admission, which is admission prices of on, in our packet, grades one through 12 are $4 for activity admission, adults are $6.
Did we increase that last year or?
I don't know.
How to get it too much?
Activity passes, which would be included, I suppose, in the admissions. Family, $150, a single 70, and seniors aged 16 and over, we, a couple of years ago, we, it was longer than that. We gave an appreciation of their seniority status, we gave them a little deal. Any input on that? If not, go ahead, April.
I know there's really been no feedback or complaints about our fees. As far as I know, that's come to me. I know the two fees that have been, have been discussed in last year were computer insurance fees and then the driver's ed fee. Those two are ones that I've kind of researched a little, have been asked to look into. Otherwise, the rest of them, no one has really said anything to me about any of the other fees.
I would say that our admission prices are on par with other places that I've attended and not unreasonable at all.
I'll just add too, it don't matter what you raise it to, you're still not going to cover the expense of the sports anyways.
Exactly. Driver's ed is what I want to look at. If we're looking at updating our vehicles every, how many years is it again?
It has to be within five months.
I, I think we need to adjust our fees.
And we, from time to time, give our drivers ed teachers a raise as well, which is appropriate, so. Let's look, let's go down our list here, substitute teacher pay, are we, I think we're competitive. Sheila, did you set, did the Career Tech Center set their daily pay, do you remember, or will that happen?
I do, we did.
I suppose that will be at that, so.
We left it the same, I believe, we did it, we did it. No, no, we didn't do that one, we did the board, I'm not sure whether we did the board already.
I mean, I don't know what other districts are doing nearby, but I think we try to stay competitive.
We actually, the area business managers just sent me a fee for substitute subrates. And, hold on, I'll just share it with you guys. We don't include a free lunch, everyone else does though, but we are comparable.
Okay. So we are competitive and if, if anyone wants to suggest that we change, that's fine. Not hearing anything. Yearbook, we sell, I guess, each year fewer and fewer and fewer yearbooks. But I think we still need to have them. Participation fees. There they are. So in elementary, grades five and six, $10 per activity. Volleyball, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and archery. With football, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade football, I'm guessing they pay a little fee to the linebackers?
Yes.
Grades seven and eight, $35 per sport. Nine through 12, $45 per sport, and there are maxes on both of those. And there's a separate one for archery. Now, didn't we a few years ago, I thought we added like competitive music and speech would also have a fee?
They are considered that sport, so they still, so like drama, speech, they have to pay that $45 with their maximum of 90.
And then the music. So technically it's not per sport in grades seven through 12, it's per activity. Or maybe, maybe only nine through, well, there's junior high speech. Okay. Any comments on that one? Then computer insurance, oh, did I skip driver's ed, I'm sorry, I did. So you wanted to address, Sheila, you wanted to discuss driver's ed. Do you have comparables on that, April, for area districts?
Yep, that's what I'm looking for now.
Had pulled it up the other day too.
I don't remember how long it go, it was.
That was back when we were starting negotiations, not sure. A lot of them were at 125, if my memory serves me, wasn't it, April?
I would say that that's probably more comparable. The $100 is probably one of the lower ones in the state. And if you look at outside agencies, I think they're right around 400 or 400.
So like hiring a private teacher.
Right, if you're going to Fargo, wherever you're, you're going to outside, plus you're going to have to drive there, which cause, has.
Well, and plus, we've added value to our program in that we now have our teachers qualify, our teacher is qualified to administer the test and, and grant the license. And that is a great savings to our families because they have to make an appointment months and months in advance and take a day off or have a day off work to drive to Jameson Fargo, so I, I think we're justified in increasing that.
Another thing to just kind of throw out there too, that I've seen in other schools is if you're in district but you're taking it for the second time because you didn't pass the first time, they usually increase that for the second time. Just something to throw out to you too, I don't know what, what other schools around the area do, but.
Good information.
Out of district, we're taking the second or third time, which I think was justified.
How often does that happen?
There was so many this year that were.
I had one in my whole career of teaching it.
Really?
Wasn't there like three or four that were repeated?
I think there's a couple times where she's, I wanted to fail a kid, not so much for not getting content, but too many happens, there's stuff like that, not, not like that.
Oh, so that might be a, yeah, okay.
It's perfect, and she's really show up late. And I think she just kicked a couple kids out because she said, you can't, there's not going to be any good. So if she or he or she would come back, then I'd agree, I'd increase the fee.
Okay. Thank you.
If you do that, I would maybe make that leeway one year so that the public knows that you're not just bringing something onto them. But it is something I would definitely look at.
I would feel a little more incentive for the parents to get their things there as well, yeah.
All right, so would somebody like to make a proposal and then we'll, we'll make that, we'll make this all one motion to adopt all these fees, but what, let's get this one fleshed out here. Should we propose to increase it to 125 in district, is that?
Yes.
High enough? Was that enough?
No.
No, it's not enough, 135, 150?
At least 150.
Your next career. I think out of district should go. Okay, so we're, are we saying 150 for in district or a second time? And then everyone, that would begin next year, so everyone, every student next year would be considered their first time unless it, it, you know, every, so they don't, if they're repeating it next year, they're considered their first time. Okay, so 150 in district, 400 out of district. That's our proposal that we're going, and, and 150 and for second, second, second or third time. And you can't take it for it. Okay.
I was going to ride your bike.
Yeah. All right, then let's move on then to the computer insurance. What does your research show on that or your feed public? Well, I think we'll go to, on, on that one time, but that will, will recap everything before we go. Okay, that's okay, no, don't worry about that.
I do know computer insurance is brought up all the time. We've had, we need work on our accessible policy, our acceptable use policy agreement. We've had, and Brandon can relate, there is a couple of seventh graders that went through two or three laptops last year. We, at one point, what did Larry say, we had what, 28 iPads out for screen repairs? So we think that the fee needs to be adjusted along with our agreement and policy. So I don't know if this is something that maybe we should wait and get more information from Larry on and work on a proposal for next month.
That's reasonable. Thank you. So, so we're going to defer action on the computer insurance and we'll adopt that then with the, do we review and adopt the acceptable use policy if there is going to be changes to it?
Yep, we will, yeah.
I have a question on that. Anna, will you guys be sending that home again this year or will you be staying in class? Because I know that was a big issue in elementary when those were going home every day.
Our plan was to keep them in, but you know, there might be a time or two where maybe they need to go home or somebody's. I don't know what's going to happen with COVID. Let's say somebody positive, just positive for COVID, which could happen, right? They probably won't be able to come to school, so they might have to go home, so that's our tool to go home. But it's surprising that most of the damage happens here at school. Carrying back and forth to walkers. They just don't take really good care of them, which is, that's sad, right? It's just become something that they, you know, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, then we're going to have one motion on the 21, 22 fees. The only changes from what's in your packet then would be that we propose to increase in district driver's ed fee to $150. Out of district or second or third time, taking the class to $400. With one year of grace on the second, so everybody next year will be at first time or even if it's the second time. And we're deferring action on the computer insurance. So items I through six, I would entertain a motion to approve those fees. Second or third, second, third or fourth? Repeated, yes, yes, of course.
I will make the motions.
Nagel moves to approve the fee schedule with the adjustment that we discussed for driver's ed and deferring action on computer insurance. Is there a second? Heimbug seconds. Any further discussion? We've discussed pretty thoroughly, so anything else, any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries. And we'll have computer insurance on the agenda next time. Next, we're going to turn to staffing and I think I'll, I'll turn this all over to Mr. Getz. I, I don't have the activities director job description in my packet, did that come out?
It said mine.
Okay. I downloaded my chat. No, no, I, I was seeing it.
There it is.
She's got a pick. So one of the things that I'm going to just kind of throw out there as a thought, and I don't know what you guys have had discussions before. Obviously, we haven't had anybody apply for the part-time position. It is a very big job for a part-time position, I'm not going to lie. It's, it's something that even in a smaller school takes up and consumes almost all of the time. And I've seen where you, we've pushed, schools have pushed that on to administration and administration spends all their time in activities and they forget about, and not, they forget about it's that they don't have time to do their actual job of the administration. So it scares me a little bit to start pushing that on to administration and forcing that direction. I, I, I'm going to caution you to do that because especially with being in the personalized competency-based learning here, I think that's important that we're having our administration working strictly with that. And not having to worry about activities. I am throwing out a thought to maybe increase that to a full-time position. And that's why you'll see the job description has changed and has probably lengthened from what is the original. I know it's longer than what's the original was there, but some of the other duties to, to add to that is this person would also be going out and soliciting to try and get more funds to help cover some of our activities. So if, just some thoughts, quick thoughts, doesn't mean that it's limited to that, but I know Brandon had brought up a good example of they used to have where the farmers could donate a truckload of, of their feed or seed to the school. So then that would go towards that activities one. Another thought would be is in our programs, we would sell advertisements so that you could go out and, and try and get other advertisement and that would be part of their job as well. And then also they would be available to sell if we were in need of that, just as like our administration does have to sub sometimes because we're short. It would give us another opportunity to have another person to that position. Am I missing anything else there that I was kind of talking to you about? Those were some big ones.
Yeah, I, Mr. Getz and I collaborated on this and I, I don't want you to think that I'm pushing it.
This has come from me.
And, but, you know, I think I gave you maybe at the last meeting, but Monica, you weren't here, so. You know, going back to, see, I'm ancient history since I started my 10th year. When, when I started, Mr. Warren, who was at that time the high school principal, was the AD and I think he got an additional like $5,000. I think that was his salary, maybe it was six or maybe it increased a little bit. When he departed in the middle of a year, then it was assigned to, at that time, Jason Schmitz, who was a high school social studies teacher. So he would have been paid to be the AD for the pro rep, he would have been paid the prorata remainder of the year. In addition to that, his teaching load, I believe, was reduced by one or two classes. So really his compensation included that one-sixth or two-sixths of. Because he was still paid his full teacher's salary, but given a little bit of extra, more extra time. He finished out that year and then he left and then Brandon, I believe you took it on for a year and then came two years. And Brandon, I remember you coming to the board and saying, you know, you had done some research, I think particularly rugby. Was being $7,500, that's a school comparable to our size. And quite honestly, you know, and it has increased since then, I think our base is 11, 11,5 or something like that. And, and when Brennan was doing it, no, when Sheri was doing it, as a teacher, she also had her teaching load reduced. So the compensation was truly more than that. And so to try to get someone to take this on when, when really it's, there's a lot of stuff that doesn't get done. It's just a bigger job than what, than what the compensation covers. I don't see that we're going to get anyone to take it on as a standalone part-time job.
It'd be pretty tough. And, and the hard part is, is like you said, if you have a game canceled, you could spend all day, sometimes two days trying to reschedule everything because you've got the refs, you've got all the, the people that are working it, you've got transportation sometimes you have to deal with, there are just so many things that it's become a bigger job than what it used to be is basically, and it's the same as administration. Everybody's job keeps getting more and more piled to it, but we never take anything away. And I, I think this is just another prime example, it's, it's too much for what you're trying to ask. And that's why you're not seeing anybody apply.
So what are your thoughts? I mean, as this piece of a position, he and I have talked about, okay, so the negotiated agreement, we've added a strength and conditioning coach. We have a, a head girls' basketball coaching position open right now. I view those as three separate positions with three separate salaries, but potentially could be held by one person. So what, as a standalone, what do you propose this new expanded position might?
It's hard to say, I, I don't, and I hate to throw numbers out to you without doing more research, but I, I would say that we would want to be comparable to an administration salary because of the hours that they're going to be working. I mean, in, in this job description, there, there's at every home event, they're going to be closing up, they got a lockup. There are some pretty big duties that they're being required to do with this on top of their daily job. So I, I would say comparable to what you're paying the principals. I, I don't say now, I'm saying what you would start them out with. I would say somewhere comparable to that. The thing to also help with this is Brendan has done a great job of working with our science teaching to where we are possibly eliminated, or we are eliminating one science teaching position, so that helps cover some of those expenses as well. I, I just think if you're going to go too low, you're also, then you're not going to get somebody because there, there's a lot of times they're going to be in the school and I'm thinking basketball season, that they could be in the school till 10, 11 o'clock, almost every night of the week. That's part of their job and that's why I'm saying that if we were to make this a teacher's salary, we're really probably going to be missing the boat simply because of they're working during the day and they're working all night. So it, it's a big job.
And weekends.
And weekends. And, and you never know, they could be getting a phone call in the middle of the week and the bus broke down. Now that's lining up to get a hold of Dave to get somebody out there. But then I would go to that athletic director to make that first phone call contact. He also has to contact parents and like, no, because the coach is on bus, more likely they can't be able to do that. There's another job that we don't think about on a day-to-day basis, we just think of, oh, it's just a job, you know? There's a big picture to that job that a lot of people are missing. So I would, I would recommend right around the same as what a starting principal in the district would be making. That'd be my recommendation. That doesn't, that's you guys get to make, I don't call, but.
Do you have comparisons as to what a, a position, somebody like Northern Cast, Central Cast, which are a little bit bigger schools than us, that maybe have someone in a role like this?
Do that, I just have not, just because I didn't know really where this was at. I guess I should have probably brought that, thinking that you were, I've been posed this.
And how many schools have a standalone?
It, it's going to become more and more as time goes, because of the same concept as where we're at, we can't find anybody. And I think you're going to start to see it happen more and more to where I know, and I just think back to my, my home high school of St. Mary's, of 400 kids. We, they started out with a, a science teacher who was the AD coach, or the AD, and then he moved into a full-time AD just because the job has grown that much. And that's a 400 kids. And we're at 500. Yes, I know it's K-12 here, but I also have been committed to where this is taking over those elementary programs. It's not two separate people anymore, it's one person that we go to instead of breaking it out, because I think you've done some of the elementary, am I right on that?
Very little.
Okay.
They used to have it separate though and it was, it was a mess.
Right. And, and so you're, you're starting to bring everything back to one person that they talk to when it comes to that. And I think you're going to start to see more and more. Are you in the forefront of that? Probably, I, I think you're, we're still in the starting stages of that, but you're going to start to see more and more of that full-time AD. I have done some research more so on the side of administration or having somebody in-house take over that position. A friend of mine, Brad Dick, up in Underwood does as a superintendent AD and he flat out says, don't, they went absolutely. Because I was looking at if we don't find anybody, could I do this job? And he's like, no, it's just, it's too much and there's too much crossing over that you're starting to see where administration's starting to stay away from it. Because if you get in trouble as the AD, it now affects your principal or superintendent spot. And I know, I've talked with Mr. Sorley over in North Sargent, because I know he also did the, the two jobs and he again said, no, this is, it's too much, it's become too much of a job. And as. Keep adding activities and then also as districts get smaller around us, there's call-ups that you're now having to work with, so that person also work as that more. It just, it's becoming a bigger job than what it was even five years ago. I don't know if that makes sense to you.
Yeah.
And that's why I say we're on the tipping edge, but I think it's a matter of time before more and more happen.
I would like to see the comparables.
Yeah.
Because to me, I see our proposed budget and then I, I hear that and we're talking 60, $70,000 compared to 11,000, it's a huge, huge difference. Not saying I'm against it, but I'm, that's, at first sight, that's, that's a huge shift in what we're doing or what we've been doing. Yeah, the comparables, what other, what can we see from, what can we expect? Or what's it going to take to get somebody to do it full-time would be the question too.
And yet. It would be nice to make a decision today to be able to get advertising, get somebody in place, so.
And I can tell you that, like I said, the science teaching position has been reduced, so there, there is some reduction there. I, I know that the budget is showing that we're going to be upside down, that, that seems to be across the district, I mean, across the state because of the simple fact that over the last two bienniums, this incoming money from the state has only been 0 or 1%, but we're still giving out 3% and 5% and it raises and there's, it's catching up to everybody. So it's not just here that you're starting to see that. I think that's going to become a more common, common theme. As the state continues to give 0 or 1% increase in state funding, you're going to see more and more of that separation. So you do have the science teaching position would be roughly 41 plus 11.5 would put you right around that 50, what, or am I out, 52 roughly?
So, and it would, would seem to be a little bit more palatable to me if we're talking about more like a starting teacher's salary rather than a starting administrator's salary. And, and, and yes, this position would be expected many times to be here till 9, 10 o'clock at night, but yet they would also not be expected necessarily to be here at 8 o'clock or 8:30 in the morning.
There's going to be a lot of these that they will be.
So in this position, they would get TFFR also?
I believe so, yes.
If they're, if they have a teaching license, if they don't have a teaching.
I would have to do some research on that.
Okay.
It, it kind of depends because if they don't have, I mean, it's not really an administrative position, it's, they still are going to be having answer to the principals and myself. Obviously, they report to me, but they would still have to be working with them and doing that side of things. The other thing with this, like I said, the big piece to helping with this is to bring in those additional funds. I think that's a big piece that is missing where if we can get even half of the athletics paid for, we've well exceeded what you're going to have for the salary. And, and when I say advertisement, yes, we would have our local advertisement, but I'm also thinking going out to Fargo, Grand Valley City, these places that all these surrounding, surrounding communities that are coming to here, we have a chance to sell advertisement there as well. Because any school that's coming here, we want to go and try and advertise anywhere. That, that's my opinion. Is it going to make it, work it? I don't know, but.
Well, at the Crete Tech Center, in the past, we've had students take us, have the opportunity to take a sports marketing program and I've long thought that there's an opportunity there for someone like this to work with students and make it an additional educational opportunity to, you know, here's how we sell, you know, here's how we market ads, because that would be applying what they're learning in the classroom. Now, if we look at this as a potential AD position as a standalone, and, but then you also have the opportunity to perhaps have that strength and conditioning, what, what, that's a head coaching salary, is it not?
Do you remember it? That's what we did, wasn't it, April?
Head coach salary.
As, as a starting, but if they had coaching experience, I would, they would get steps added. And then potentially a head girls' basketball coaching position, if that's of interest or, and in their ability, you know, that could stack up to a pretty decent salary, even with the lower beginning. I mean, not with not a, an administrator beginning salary, but it's more work too.
Right. So maybe I should step back and ask you, because I'm used to a lower, I'm thinking of when I say starting administration salary at 60,000. And maybe you guys are a lot higher here than what I was thinking, so maybe I should step back and say, what is a starting principal roughly rate there? And to be honest with you, in the, it would be nice for the advertisement, but at the same time, it would be negotiable because that's what it's saying there in the job description.
30 teachers or 42.5, April?
I knew teachers are 42.5, but I didn't know administration's starting.
42.2, yeah.
And if, if you advertised as starting teacher salary and you had someone of interest, I, I think it's fairly likely that you would have experienced, excuse me, teachers interested. Wouldn't be limited to teachers, but then you could conceivably add their five or 10 years of experience on like you would if they were a teacher.
My concern would be what if you hire somebody that's not a teacher? Because that's, that's potentially can happen with that.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't have to be a teacher. I know that there's other ADs, even in the big districts, there's ADs that are not teachers. They don't have a teaching license, it's, they're coming in as a sports side of things, it's not. And that's ideally what you would want with this, it would be somebody that's more sports-minded rather than.
Activities, activities.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry.
A broader view.
When I say sports, I mean.
You would require them to get their sub like.
Yeah, well, yes, I would, yeah. I believe that was part of the job description as well.
We, we talked about it and I don't remember if you left it or not, but I think that we.
Yeah. The AD must hold a substitute. Yeah, the A D must hold a substitute license to cover classes for coaches, advisors leaving for events and as needed by the principal. So it would be, there would be that addition there that if we need one, a sub-position there to. I feel like I'm trying to sell this too much.
Well, I just, I, I don't know if I missed it, but I mean, this is the first that I've.
Yeah, I didn't see this previously.
I didn't see this, you know, before the pack, so this is.
I think.
I think it was sent out in an email because it was kind of, we were still working on it and maybe it all in the first packet, am I right on that, April? That was one that was sent later, cause we were still trying to finalize everything, make sure it would. It, it stated closely, but don't get me wrong, that doesn't mean that we can't still change.
Yeah.
A D position, so.
No, I've had, I was trying, it's just, it's a big, you know, it's a big, uh, budget issue.
I hate to wait until our next meeting, but I do think we need to have some more comparables. Um, and we need to settle on at least a base starting salary before we advertise this. I, and we, I do want to try to have a board retreat and we typically have not had, try, we've tried not to.
Saying that, the last several years we have, so you may still just.
Well, we had to, we had to. Uh, we have tried not to take action, uh, a board retreat.
You can't take action at a board retreat.
Well, we have.
Everyone I've been to, we have.
Well, and, and it's been a public meeting.
Yeah.
And it's been on the agenda.
Retreats have to be public as well.
It is, and it has been public, um, and it's been, uh, uh, it's been appropriately noticed and we've taken action. But nobody's, um, what are your wishes?
Special meeting.
I, I, I just can't.
Sorry. I'm good with that.
And it's okay, I mean, we're in transition here with.
I deserve it, you're all the ones you guys had last year.
Need to hear more about the science.
Yeah.
Personalized learning is something, the coaching position there, I wanted to discuss at the retreat, that's another salary that we have. Going forward. For budget issues, so.
Yeah, there's just a lot of questions for me, is how, how it'll look like, is it gonna be standalone, is it gonna be tied to other things? And that affects the salary, what we can be offering and not offering. Again, if it's gonna be a basketball coach, if it's gonna be a teacher, then all that is different than a base sixty or seventy thousand dollar salary. I mean, to me, that's just a, a lot of questions to me where it's special, special meeting.
My other concern with it as well is if we do have, you know, we have a lot of teachers that are coaches, if one of them steps up to this position, are we gonna be left with the vacant position right?
Potentially.
They're under contract.
Potentially.
We'd have to release them from their contracts.
Especially with the O R salary like that, some might say.
Well, exactly, that's what I was thinking.
Right.
Right.
I'm doing my job, I do this.
Why don't we review the rest of the staffing?
Okay.
Um, and, and please, uh, update us, it's not on here, but the science teaching position, which I thought we had covered, but maybe we don't?
Well, yeah, there was, uh, there were some tricky spots here. We had a science teacher that we had under contract and, um, I shouldn't say under contract because she really didn't start or anything like that. But it was, she was from the Philippines and one of the things that we found out is she forgot to tell her husband.
Good boy.
That she was going to, to America, so we are doing some more. We have to open that position back up after, after that has happened.
Oh, just what, what else?
Welcome to our room. But, uh, so that position has been opened back up. The, the reason that we're eliminating one of the science positions is because Brandon has worked with Kayla. And she is now getting an other field license so she can teach at the high school level, which opens her up to some more classes. And so we can cover the science position with two teachers instead of maybe three, and Brandon can maybe add more to that.
We'll just be losing one. Physics, we won't be able to fill house, we wouldn't have enough staff, but that's such a higher level class that you could take that through distance ed and be, be supervised that way, since right now they can only have one or two kids that are enrolled in that. So that we could basically fill all of our classes with, with two teachers besides physics, so. So that'll limit one.
We don't, we don't have that teacher currently, though.
No, we've got an interview set up for tomorrow morning already.
Obviously, her husband didn't agree with it.
Yes, we had, we thought we had it filmed and then it changed now because of, obviously, you know, the, the husband is not gonna be very happy with that, so. We do have some interviews set up, I, we've been talking with some people locally to see what we can come up with, uh, if there's anybody that we can pull out of retirement. There's a lot of things that we're, we have in works, but I do know we have some interviews set up for tomorrow. Excuse me, Thursday, tomorrow is only Wednesday. I'm not used to the morning meetings, so.
All right, so how about the other staffing items that are listed here?
Elementary paraprofessional, I'm gonna actually ask Anna to speak on that, just because she knows more of what we're looking at there.
Okay, um, so we've been, we advertised for, okay, we've gotta fill a special ed position, not ask the Tracy, but so we're gonna partner with Tracy. So we need to fill a special ed plus our other district, plus we're asking for that new district based on the personnel rank. Um, so, um, we've gotten some applicants, but in order to work in our school, they have to have parent certification, which kind of limits our pool a little bit, cause they have to have a certain number of hours or they have to pass a test or there's something, but they have to have that in place before they can be hired by us. So we've got some applicants for it, um, but with your approval, then we would hire two district and a special ed. And like I said, we're gonna just partner with Tracy's, we're not gonna run two different pools and candidates, we're just gonna put them together, interview them, um, within the, the next couple of weeks and hopefully have, um, two district parents and a special ed para hire.
Okay, just for your information, Monica, and, and refresh it for everyone else, the special ed staff that work in our building are employed by the Cheyenne Valley Special Education Union. So even though they, they work here and they look like they're all public schools employees, so that's what she's talking about. But we hire some of our paras and teachers and, and, and Cheyenne Valley hires others, so. And we have had a number of paras and we have, um, we agreed that we, we should increase the number of district paras so that we can provide a second person on the playground for supervision at all times.
Yes, and, and a lot of our paras resigned, so Naomi here instead resigned last year, so that left open one district position. And then with this extra district position, um, the schedule's been made, so there will always be two guaranteed two district pairs out on the playground and, um, supervising in the lunchroom, that third one will be supervising lunchroom. So this district parent position is a lot of supervision and the, the extra time will be in the classroom, um, with kids that, that any of our kids.
I guess I'm just not following, did we, I thought we approved that last time.
I don't know if the motion was made to approve it or not, there was the discussion. Like, yeah, it's an extra one.
But not an extra one from last one?
No.
It's the same.
It's the same extra one, so like I said, we didn't sort of hire just Naomi's position, we need to hire another district person. And then Tracy's gotta hire special ed, but like I said, we're gonna pool those together, so that.
So I think back in May, we approved my, uh, report of the personnel complaints and that included that the board consider hiring a school resource officer. And then we acted separately on hiring the school resource officer. It also recommended that we consider hiring an additional para, which we have not yet acted on, is that right? So, so now we are acting on that, so we're replacing a para who stepped down and we are approving the hiring of an additional para, okay? So, yep, correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that it wasn't.
Okay, yeah, good point, good question. Um, so we're, we're sort of deferring the activities director for the moment, but I think we can go ahead and act on the elementary para. And then, uh, do you wanna update us on girls' basketball first?
I, I've kind of held off on girls' basketball simply because in the current activities director job description, it says that they are supposed to be included in that, so it's kind of hard to hire a, a girls' basketball coach when we don't even have an A D in place.
And if it was a volleyball or football coach, we really wouldn't need to because of the timing that girl. And, and at this point, our assistant girls' basketball coach is working with our girls and taking them to team camps and so the.
Yeah, things are covered, so, yeah, and that's, I agree with that. It would be different if we were being forced to, but there is no force at this time to be looking for that.
Okay.
So how many have applied? Um, I don't think that they've been, I think the only one, I think there's only been one at this time. And that was through Craig, if I remember right. Yep.
Okay, so I'm looking then for a motion to approve the hiring of an elementary paraprofessional and we're not looking for any, I mean, we don't need a motion to hire a girls' basketball coach, we simply just aren't gonna do it yet.
Right, it's just an update order.
And, and frankly, if it's, if it's an elementary para, that's classified staff, do, do, I'm not sure we, the board needs to approve that, but for budgetary reasons and for your justification and support, I think we should have acknowledged that we approve that.
It's an M T E, so if you guys are approving the final M T E, so I would, I would make a recommendation to make a motion on it.
Right, is there a motion to approve the addition of an elementary paraprofessional that we did not approve last, last month? Additional. I'll make the motion. Nagel notes to approve, uh, the addition of an elementary paraprofessional, is there a second? Heimbuck, seconds, any discussion? I think we've.
Does it make sense why I'm asking?
Yes.
Normally, I'd be wanting to, if there was somebody that was, um, resigning.
Yeah.
But because it's an additional M T U, that's why.
Agreed. All right.
I have a kind of related question to that, doesn't need to be right now, but when we were doing negotiations, they had, um, talked to us about trying to get more adults in the classroom. Um, and our recommendation to them was to set up a task force, is that any, you guys know anything about them?
Craig said something about that and we had talked about it, but it didn't really hit. And the teachers, they didn't, yeah.
Okay, is that where the parents involved in that you're speaking of?
No, no, just adults in the classroom.
I remembered that, right, yeah.
Okay, just curious, whose idea was that or request?
Um, yeah, his name just left my head, Dobitz was the one that brought it to our attention and, and.
Their negotiating team.
Yeah.
And yet.
Wanting to get more supervision to help keep the kids engaged in the classroom.
And yet, you're not hearing that from your, from the, the teaching staff or?
Directly in that, no, I mean, they're, they're always gonna take an extra hand, you know, in the classroom, um, but maybe this extra person will take up, take up some of that. I, I think there's concerns more along the line of that how big kindergarten class is going to be or how big the first grade class is gonna be or how big the second grade class is gonna be. And I think that that's probably along those lines is maybe where it's, the concerns.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to add an elementary paraprofessional, is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say no, motion passes. It's not on the agenda, but Anna, what do you have, uh, what are your thoughts right now about our kindergarten class size?
Um, if we haven't, we're still down about thirty-five, can I look at that while you guys are digging there?
Okay, so an item on the agenda is to approve teacher contracts and this is because we failed to do that last month and I've signed them all, so please, please. Uh, I'd entertain a motion to approve the teaching contracts that are, were prepared with, um, under the new negotiated agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll start from this.
We're already looking for it.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Rosendale moves to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two teacher contracts, is there a second? Thor, seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say no, motion carries. Are you ready?
Yep, uh, thirty-four or thirty-five, cause I got a phone call from my mom that's waiting on their summer days, but we're, another child in mind, so we would be about thirty-four.
That's a goodly number, I mean, that's a nice number for two, how about our first grade group?
Um, that is, that's our, um, we, we're gonna lose some, but I don't, we don't have all those changes in power schools, so you know, we lost some of our families, you know, sign ops and we lost a couple of big families. They're gonna make good ones, but then.
I'll wait and check on this.
As of today, we have forty-one in first grade and, um, fifty-two in second, second grade, but I know that, and that's three, that, that one's gonna be three, but our first grade is only two. But like I said, some of those families that were in there are going to be out of there, so.
Okay, thank you, any other questions? If not, um, let's circle back, what is our, what is our plan then with the activities director position? How quickly can we, and we, we could just have a Zoom meeting, um, later this week to, uh, hear your, uh, learn what you learned about other positions, would that be acceptable with everyone? Okay, um, any, well, let's, let's deal with that when we get to the board retreats on the next regular. All right, so anything else with regard to staffing? Brandon, you're, we're still looking for a science teacher.
My fingers been crossed a lot of times, so.
Maybe you need to unfreeze something.
I don't know, something, so I'm, I'm hopeful with the interviews you have coming up, we can, if all the candidates can get here and form their house.
Yeah.
People applying.
That should be a question on the application. To another continent. Honey, I just thought you'd be okay with it. Maybe she would come along or maybe, well, maybe that was the whole thing, she would.
Maybe she didn't want it.
All right, moving on then to policy, um, first reading of policies. Uh, when we talked about whether or not we would appoint board, uh, committee members at this meeting, we explored our policy and we learned that we do not have in place the recommended policy on school board committees. And so April and I and David discussed that, let's adopt this policy and I think we can, can we, we can do it without, can we do it without a second? No, we better not do it without a second reading, but then, we, we need to have a second, okay, so, um, I'd like to defer assigning, uh, members to board, to committees until our August meeting. So let's go through this policy, the, the, and these are the committees that we already have. Technology, who currently serves on that? Sheila and a number of staff members, okay? Negotiations is, was Sheila and Bill, um, which I have often thought should not just be negotiations, but like personnel compensation because they negotiate with the negotiating unit from the teachers, but also deal with administrative compensation and, and classified staff, I, but it's fine that way. Wellness is, I think, oh, good, it's up here, thank you. Um, wellness is, I think we have policy or it's required by law that we have to have that. And as long as I recall, Mrs. Dobitz and Mrs. Gebhardt have been on that. Oh, Jara Campbell, of course, is, would be new to it, but that, that's required and Ryan, you've been on that, have you? Has that been a great burden to you, all the meetings that, that?
No, I think we met once.
Okay.
Every year you have to review the wellness policy, so that's the approval.
Okay, um, we have a facilities committee that is, uh, has, did a nice job of reviewing and updating a kind of a long-term vision plan of, uh, our facilities and grounds. So our board members are Robert and Ryan on that one. Leadership, professional development, I've been serving on that one. Uh, curriculum. You know, the curriculum committee is truly supposed to approve our curriculum every year and I'm pretty sure that, you know, I don't know how we even define curriculum as, because we're not approving textbooks and, you know, teachers are out there, you know, finding resources to use, so work needs to be done in that area. Um, and then the other committees are not school board committees. So those are, so what we'd like to do today is embody in policy these committees. So those are, so what we'd like to do today is embody in policy these committees. And so I'm looking for a motion to approve the first reading of policy BBBB. Thornt moves to approve that policy. Is there a second?
A second.
Nagel, seconds. And so by the August meeting, please, those who are already on a committee, consider whether you would like to continue on that one. Monica, you know, I'm pretty flexible. You know, I often, I, I no longer have a student in the district and so I'll, you know, I'll go anywhere you want. I want people to serve in an area that interests them and that they can really dive into and learn about. So I could do without being on negotiations again, but whatever. Okay, so with that, is there any further discussion on that motion to approve that first reading? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next, we'll have the first reading with no second reading required, because there are just extremely minimal changes in the language. And this is recommended by the School Boards Association. This is a required policy. And we, as you can see, it's just crossing off the word language in the title and one other place. So no, and we'll let it go.
Nope, because we just, we just adopted it. And then when Julie looked at it, she said to, yes, remove the word language. So we don't need a second reading, because that's all we're doing.
We just adopted it in May, but we, we should have. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the first reading with no second reading required of policy GABA. Nagel moves to approve. Is there a second? Heimbug, seconds. Any discussion? Any questions for discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. We have no existing policy review today, pass that off.
Good thing I have an appointment at eleven.
Okay. No problem. All right. We've already heard, and thank you principals for being here this morning. I know that it's, you know, your summer off, but we appreciate you being here to review and answer questions on those soundbooks and other things. So anything you'd like to share with us, ask of us, report to us.
Well, the TLE is going to be finishing up their second semester. I guess it's not TLA anymore, but we met eight times in June here with the professors, professors came down. And they are going to be going to conference in August and then we're going to get a cargo for that. And then next semester is going to be over in Allendale, so we'll travel all over to Allendale. Or the professors will go over there to Allendale. The, the teachers are going to be presenting at the conference and Mr. Getz is invited to come with us. So we've had teachers busy over the summer and they've been presenting at conferences, they've been going to conferences. And next, or tomorrow, we're meeting, Mr. Getz and Mr. Bay and myself are meeting with the police department to talk about the SRO position and the curriculum and DARE. And to kind of just get on the same page and figure out where I know, because Jeremy got back from training, which he did really well on, you know, the feedback that they got from him, so.
Super. Mr. Bay?
First I'm C P. My update.
Hey, superintendent.
I don't know if I have a lot, because it's, I'm so new to the area, but first, thank you for inviting me into the new district, into the district. I know you had mentioned April had received the business managers, but I do want to point out that I was also on high honors, if I remember right. Is that correct, April?
Yeah.
She actually did really well.
We know she's a rock star.
She is a rock star, so. First community credit union is, is going to be putting on, I know we don't truly have a logo, but we're going to be, they're creating a debit card that can have, like, it has two logos on top of it. The tornado and then also the star.
The crest.
The crest.
We call that the crest.
Okay. So those two will be on, so that'll be coming out to their patrons.
What tornado are they using?
I think it's the Neil, yeah. There is no real true tornado little thing, so I, I think that they're using the one, the old one. And I'm guessing on that, because I'm not sure where that all stands, but. I don't have a lot, I'll just end with that. Obviously, they've talked a lot about the different things that are happening with everything and we, and, oh, and another thing, just so you guys are aware, in the future, I did do it at this meeting, but I'll take this and I'll go through it and kind of make marks on it, so that that way it helps, as my report is basically giving you kind of guidance on stuff. So if you have questions when you see that, please call me and ask me or send me an email. So that way I can kind of have questions prepared or not so much prepared, but if I need to go like with the AD, if I would have put that on there, yes, I forget stuff. So it would have been something simple, if somebody's saying, can you give us comps for that? Perfect, I can definitely do that. You know, so that's why you'll see that the next, in the future, it'll be broken down a little bit more. And then I'll include everything on there. I know I've talked with Sonya a little bit about this. If something to help speed up the meeting a little bit is sometimes, one would be adding Dave on there as for technology for reports, but how all the reports done as a written report? And then you guys can approve those as one, if you want to pull something out, you can pull that out. Yeah, I guess you don't approve them very well, so it would basically, everything would be written, so that you wouldn't have to take the time of listening to me talk, just like you're going now. It's all written down unless there was something else to add real quick, but a lot of it's written. Does that make sense? Saves you time.
Yeah, a few years ago, we, you know, the superintendent, a lot of times we'd get to the meeting and then people would be, the principals would be handing out their reports and reports. So now we're inundated with all these papers when we've already reviewed a hundred and whatever plus-page packet. And so I really appreciated that the, the principals and AD have been submitting and including their reports as a part of the packet. That, that I appreciate and I think we need to continue. And if there are other, you know, a technology report, a transportation and facilities report, sure, let's get them in there and we, we can start approving them if you think that's appropriate and necessary. But it's great to have them.
I'll read it back. Don't talk too much.
I'm sorry, I need to. A, a few years ago, you know, it used to be we always had the minutes and all the financials at the beginning of the meeting. And when we start at seven AM, certain times of the year, I start losing, we start losing members at eight fifteen, eight thirty. So we were getting to the end of the meeting and so, and, and, and all, like, all the good, important discussion stuff was left. Not that it isn't important to approve the bills and review the financials, but of course it is. But, you know, seldom is there, you know, there are questions, but often we would have already asked those questions by email to April or, at that time, Tom. If we, if you want to rearrange the agenda, if you want to create a consent agenda that just says, okay, here are all the financials, we're going to just have, add the minutes and we'll vote one time on that. We can change things however board members would like.
And I will add to that is that I've seen, that's exactly how I've seen it for the last two schools I've been to. Is it's a consent agenda, so you guys are coming in, it's already done, prepared. You make one motion to approve all the board, all the reports, all the, the, April's information would all be approved at one time. And then you, once the motion's made, if there was something that you wanted to pull out, you'd ask those quick questions and then everything's moved on. So it just really speeds up. About five minutes, you have pretty much a lot of that quick stuff done within five minutes.
We can surely try that if we like for the next meeting, see how it goes. And we can make adjustments however we want.
I'd say we try.
Okay.
We've got, like I said, we always have the information.
Right, you guys have already reviewed it, so.
Yeah.
It's more so just to ask some of those questions.
All right, so your report is completed.
Yes.
For this meeting, and we have no committee reports, I assume.
Yep.
Okay. I think one thing that wasn't on the agenda that we've had several questions on, that we should address, the, the research that we've done regarding Monica's election. She's still living in the city and certainly qualified to be seated on the board as she has been this morning. Your plans, I believe, are, you have acquired or in the process of acquiring a home out of town. Still in the district, obviously. April and David and I have done research with our attorney. We believe we have justified, first of all, there was a question as to whether we could even elect directors based on geographical areas. And we believe we've justified that we can and have been doing so properly based on two reorganizations, that one that happened in nineteen fifty-eight or nine. And then we're still seeking final, we, we, we think that it was voted on again in the nineteen seventies, which, early seventies, which has established the geographic areas that we have today and have been operating on. The next question is, well, what if someone moves out of the geographical district that they serve in? And I believe the answer we've received is that the board may declare a vacancy, which implies that the board may choose not to declare a vacancy. At this time, it's not an issue. In the future, it probably will become an issue that we should discuss. If we act on it and, and we, we vote to declare a vacancy, then we need to fill the vacancy. We can either appoint someone or we can call a special election. If we choose not to declare a vacancy and we discuss it, I asked this question to the attorney via email yesterday. Well, then if we don't vote to declare a vacancy, should we vote not to, just so it's perfectly clear? And her response was, she would not do that. She would discuss it. If nobody moves to declare a vacancy and the board doesn't act to declare one, then Mrs. Heimbug serves. And so that is something we all need to consider in the coming months. Is that something that we should do? I'm not promoting one way or the other. I did ask if, if a motion was made in regard to declaring a vacancy, would, would that be considered a conflict of interest for you as a board member to vote on that? And she said, yes, she would consider that a conflict of interest. And I'm not sure how, you know, if, if you insisted that you were going to vote, I don't know what we would do. But that's the information that I have. Do either of you have anything to add?
I think you hit it pretty close. She, she would still be within the district, so that's why it's questionable. And that's why you guys would have that may determine a vacancy and may not. Simply because of the fact she is still in the district, she still can serve. She's just not in the right region. Well, at the time of the election, she was in the right region, the election was finalized when you guys.
We can just certify the results.
Yep.
And I want to make it clear, and it's my understanding, that you were aware, you were working on the purchase and you approached April and asked her about that, you know, whether you could serve it.
Indirectly.
And she wasn't sure.
Indirectly.
I mean, based on state law doesn't provide for that and we did not immediately have.
I, I did question it and, you know, at that point, we were just looking, we had no set plans in mind. But at the point forward, we will not move on house until the end of August, so. Actually, I didn't mean to create any.
I find it all so interesting. And it's been interesting for me to look back at those from, it's, I'm, I'm sorry to say, but I recognized almost all the names from the minutes from the nineteen fifty-eight, fifty-nine and the election. I mean, not that I was even born then, but I knew, my dad served on the board starting here the year I was born. And so this was about five years before that and I knew a lot of those people. I was surprised that Marie Gray ran the principal boards in New York. She would have made a stir in the match, wouldn't she? So that is where we are. Again, I'm not promoting one or the other course of action, but welcome to the board. Thank you for your interest and participation. Any other questions regarding that? All right, so that brings us to future meeting dates. Let's start with a special meeting later this week.
Anya?
Yes, sorry. Go ahead, April.
We need to act on the budget, so we can give the county what our levy amount is going to be. We have to give them a dollar amount to put in that notice. So along with the hearing date, I didn't separate it out, that's my bad. But yeah, so we need to have a motion to approve the budget and then determine the levy amount that I need to send to Wanda.
Oh, we need to do that today. I thought we could do that on the tenth of August.
Do you want to wait to the, because then after the meeting, then I can send it to her, because the due date's the tenth, so do you want to wait till then?
Does that give, it gives you enough time to?
Yep, I'll just give her a heads up and know that we'll do it after our meeting at seven AM. If that works.
Because I would like to see it updated with, you know, if we get the, if we reach an agreement on the AD position and we do, or we don't have the science teacher. I, yeah, and I'd like to see the final, like, the, the carryover and, okay.
Yep, I'll let her know.
Okay, so we would like a special meeting later this week and a remote meeting is fine with me. When do you think you can be ready?
I should be ready by Friday.
Friday morning?
Unless other superintendents are not getting back to me, but I should be able to make phone calls pretty quick. I just hope tomorrow morning we have interviews, or Thursday morning, there's interviews. Tomorrow we meet with the SRO, so that gives me some, a few days there just to make sure.
And is a seven AM meeting what everyone wants? Or would you be interested in a noon meeting or?
It shouldn't be.
Yeah.
It'd be short.
Tell me what you want, I'm flexible, I think, but yeah, I don't have anything Thursday or Friday that's complex. I might be remote, are remote on Friday, but that's okay.
Well, we can do Thursday too, I mean, just pressing a little harder.
What are your thoughts? I mean, the sooner we get this decided, we can get it advertised and. We're meeting a plan for the coming spring. Friday at noon? Probably for ads.
Should be Friday or Thursday at noon?
I'm okay with Thursday at noon, that's everyone else's. You can't do seven AM Thursday, right? You have.
I can, I'm just concerned that I don't get responses that I asked up.
Thursday noon, remote meeting. Agenda item, activities director.
Yeah.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Here we go, starting out good, right? Okay, then, it has been our tradition to have a board retreat, at which we do not ever conduct any business whatsoever. Some topics that I think we could take a deep dive into are the budget. Is there anything else? There's a tiny little item that, that has come up for me a few times that I'd like you to think about. And I think it's an appropriate topic for a retreat, but it shouldn't take too long. You know, many of us, including Bill, who's not in here anymore, has, have lost a family member during our service on the board. And we, the board, the district always sends a plant or a flower arrangement, which is very nice and very appreciated. Flowers don't last very long. I, I believe the OEA or a teachers group, one thing that they did when my dad passed was they had a little collection and bought some library books. And then they put the deceased's picture in the library book. And, and at least two occasions, I've gotten a text message or an email from a parent who said, my kid just brought home this library book that you, was given in memory of your dad, which is really cool. When Mr. Conlin passed here, there's been an effort, which I think you were probably all aware of, that, you know, let's, 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 let's give something in his honor that's more lasting, like it'd be a tree out here or a bench. And I think we should consider whether, well, I love to do business for their local flower shops. I appreciate having them. I think a more lasting memorial might be appropriate as well. So that's just a little item, food for thought.
The other effect on that is that I know that Krista does a phenomenal job of researching whoever the memorial is made in. But Raffin, I'm a potato. and then brought home a potato book with my father. I mean, she does a really good job.
And it wouldn't necessarily have to be books in every case, and we might just, you know, I can see even accumulating, you know, a certain dollar amount all year, and then having a group that decides, here's what's going to happen. Maybe it's a scholarship, maybe it's, you know, maybe it's something different, but considering something else. So that would be my little suggestion for a short retreat topic. And the budget, anything else?
The leadership.
The VCBL?
Yeah.
So memorials?
Plan.
And what?
On my note, I had strategic plan.
Oh, yeah.
From you or Craig.
Okay, let's do memorials, strategic plan, personalized learning coach, and budget. And I think that's an order, that's a good order, because I think, you know, using, going through the strategic plan leads to personalized learning. Does that fit with our plan? And the budget needs to support our strategic plan. So that should be plenty unless somebody else has something else that we should cover. All right, so now, that's the hard part. Now, the easy part is to find a day. Sheila, you usually have a little vacation plan this time of year. Robert, you go to our shows or something out of state, Wes, you start.
I'm down the first week of August.
Oh, okay.
No, I think on the church.
Oh, you're going on the church, okay. Okay, so I'm seeing a little window, the 28th, 29th, 30th of, and this one we've done often in the evening.
The 29th and 30th, though, will be out of town.
What's everybody doing tonight? About next week? Wait, it already says this week. No, no, okay, what's, the 13th, 19th through the 23rd? 22nd? Okay.
Probably the evening of the 21st.
I might have JDA board. How about Monday, the 19th? Where are we out there?
I'm in Bismarck. What was the, July 28th, was there a conflict on the 28th?
Yes.
Oh.
SRCTC.
Oh.
Our annual meeting.
And then you're leaving that 29th?
No, no.
Who's leaving yours?
22nd, 37th.
April was gone, but is April, I can't remember, are you at the retreats all the time?
I don't have to be, no.
Got to answer those budgets.
So it's the 29th and 30th, you're gone?
Yep, I have a wedding, yep.
Okay, so, and you're gone the entire first week, and our board meeting is on Tuesday, the 10th.
Well, hold on, the 19th, that Monday? I'm in Bismarck, but what time would we meet?
That's what we usually do. Yeah, an evening.
Oh, I can make it back.
No speeding tickets.
Oh.
What is that, Sunday evening, the 19th? 7:00 to 9:00 PM or something? Put an end time on it, so, does that work? Do you want to bring supper in? We've done that, we've had the Beaver make us supper and bring that in, or just eat before you come, I don't care. That work? That's nice, we can get it done sooner rather than later. And so if you would make sure, then, send us out the updated budget as best you can, which we may need to wait until after our Thursday noon meeting, and then we'll have an idea on the, a better idea on the AD.
With you, is it, you have one done up to today?
Yes, the budget that I posted on there is up to date. So I have, I don't, I have to check, I don't remember if I added that extra para in there. But yeah, and I would have to adjust the salary for one less science teacher. So I'll make some adjustments, but as of, be up to date as of June 30th, basically.
Okay, and where was that? Was that, I have solid.
It's in the packet, because otherwise it'd be too big, so then I just, I posted separately on the packet page.
I had one that was from June 16th, so that one is in ours.
Yep.
Does that include any of the ESSER funds at all, April?
No, I did not budget any of that in, either.
So that's going to be a wash, though, the dollars will come in and the dollars.
It should be, yep, yes, yep. And it's over, we can use some of them till 2024, so I don't want to put the whole amount in, and, you know, so it'll be going on, so it'll be an amendment later.
Okay, and so the strategic plan is on the website in the public area, and if you can't reach it, then, you know, reach out to April and she can help you fund it. Anything else? So, board retreat next Monday, 7:00 PM here. You want to eat on your own, or do you want us to get a meal brought in?
I just need a meal.
Okay, fine with me.
You don't.
So no meal?
No meal.
Okay.
Plenty of water in the fridge, okay?
Then our next regular meeting would be Tuesday, August 10th at 7:00, 8:00. And then April and I have discussed having a little new orientation with you, Monica, and we can work on that after the meeting. All right, anything else for the good of the order? Thank you all for your hard work today and here, and I'll declare the meeting adjourned at 9:58. Thank you.
First meeting, $3. I didn't see any dollars.
Call the meeting back, order here, for the first meeting of the 21st through the 22nd of the year, and we'll start off with the oath of office, we changed up a little bit, and we'll actually do the oath immediately.
So if you want to read your oath and sign it, then I'll know directly.
I, Sonia Meal, of Oaks, North Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of School Board Member according to the best of my abilities, so help me God, under pains and penalties of perjury.
You're not supposed to read it with a question, everyone.
Absolutely, Richard. It has been painful at times.
I, Monica Heimbach of Oaks, North Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Office of School Board Member according to the best of my abilities, so help me God, under pains and penalties of perjury.
Welcome to the board, the new members. So the next order of business, let's try it again, next item on the board, item is to elect the president, so I'll take nominations, open the floor for nominations for a president.
I nominate. You're going to nominate yourself? I nominate Sonia.
We have a nomination for Sonia. Any more nominations for president? Any more nominations for president? Hearing no other nominations, we'll cease to, what is it? Let's see if I can say it right. Motion to cast an unanimous ballot for Sonia as the next board president. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And I'll turn it over here.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda then is to elect a vice president of the board. I forget, who was our vice president? Was it Bill? It was Bill, he's gone. So are there nominations for vice president? I mean, really, I've never missed a meeting.
You're that hard to work with.
I will nominate Ryan. Sheila Nagel nominates Ryan. Is there a second? Or is, are there any additional nominations? Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, I will call for a vote for a unanimous ballot for Ryan Rosendahl as vice president on our board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. You want?
Yes.
Motion passes. Robert did.
Yeah, I did.
All right, so you have an agenda. You have a lengthy agenda before you. Are there any additions to this agenda, not that you brought to my attention?
Of the activities handbook, we needed to do a first reading.
And so we'll put that. Where shall we put the person? Okay, we have A, B, C, second, yeah, we'll put it under D, we'll make D one activity, first reading of activity handbook. Help me remember when we get there. Anything else? If not, is there a motion then to approve the agenda with the addition of the first reading of the activity handbook?
I'm a motion.
Rosendahl moves to approve the agenda, is there a second? Nagel seconds, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passes, and the agenda is approved. So we start out with our packet, the TLA enrollment, there is an item in your packet. Okay, yeah, I'm there now. Is everyone then on page? Well, I might not have the same packet you guys do, because there was a couple things missing.
I'm on the one that you have, so.
It was probably the one I posted prior for my vacation.
Robert and I were on the ball, and we were working on our practice last week, right? Okay. So we received an email from Katie Johnson requesting and stating that she would be withdrawing from the TLA for reasons, seeking a difference of graduate degrees, so kudos to her, but we will want to accept that, that withdrawal, and she does indicate that she expects to have to repay. Right, didn't I mean that? And she will pay back what the school has put in. So with that, is there a motion to approve the withdrawal of Katie Johnson from the TLA?
And the repay amount that we had the other student pay was $673.58.
So it should be the same?
Yep, yep.
All right, is there a motion to approve that?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Thorp moves to approve the withdrawal from the TLA, is there a second? Monica Heimbach seconds, is there any discussion? Any further discussion?
No. If so, may, will it end if too many withdraw, I guess? Or want to start it there, they'll finish it out regardless of how many are allowed.
How many students do we have now?
We've got, is there six of us, seven, nine of the, they won't, they'll keep one, no?
Six from Oaks and three from.
Okay, where am I, blank, I'll look that up, I just remember. I'm on some.
Well, we appreciate you being. All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. The 2021-22 preliminary budget and hearing date. April, what guidelines can you give us for that?
So that's the regular preliminary budget hearing. So it has to be in, basically, the month of September. I think it's like August 20th through September 30th, you have to have a date. So typically, what we'll do is we set the date for after our September meeting.
Immediately following.
Yep. Yep, so we kind of throw the timeout there at 8:30, that's typically, gives us a break in between the meeting and next one. So it'd be September 14th at 8:30 AM.
Okay, presuming that we, you know, the board has yet to set our regular board meeting day and time, which we'll discuss later, but shall we say that we'll set it immediately following our regular September board meeting, which is yet to be determined?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and that. So go through our budget calendar now. By August 10th, we have to certify our preliminary budget and submit it to the county, correct?
Yep, with our hearing date, yep. And then we prepare the notice and send the notices out to all the taxpayers. And then we have to hold a budget hearing in that timeframe, that 30-day timeframe, and then the final adoption is in October. So we have to have the final approved budget to the county by October 10th.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to set the preliminary budget hearing date as immediately following our regular September board meeting. Is that appropriate? Okay. Nagel makes that motion, is there a second? Thorp seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is the second reading of the student handbooks. The first one in our packet was the, or is, is the 7 through 12 handbook. I did send a couple of questions to Mr. Beta yesterday. So we'll start with those, I don't remember what my questions were. Oh, yes, I do, alternative program.
Yeah, the alternative program mainly intended ad libit was credit recovery. If I go to alternative program, you know, page three. I don't have a really set of criteria. I think that's something that's just been in the handbook for years and years, that hasn't really been looked at much closer, but there's no alternative program that I'm aware of, other than credit recovery for students that failed a class. I would say that would also probably fall into, as I read that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say it also probably follows a little bit with the classes that are from North Dakota Center of Mississippi. Correct. If a kid was taking a class for credit through North Dakota Center of Mississippi because he don't operate in house, or an alternate reason of why they have to, it's just giving them approval to do that. That kind of what I was seeing it, yeah.
Okay. I think my second question related to high school graduation requirements and the possibility of re-adding health. We had, I think I either had a conversation with you, or we talked about it in a board meeting, what are your thoughts about that?
I think I'll still work with Mr. Getz, and this is still, it's still part of the graduation requirements, like you can still take half a semester of health and a semester of P, or just one full year of P. I'd like to work with Mr. Getz and some ideas on that. I don't think it really requires a board directive, because it's just basically the classes that are offered, and it's just a matter of deciding if we're going to require, like, all freshmen to take or leave it as an elective. But we have some options there, both where we can teach in-house or through Mississippi, so I'll work with Mr. Getz on that.
Yeah, I just recall, I don't know, three or four years ago, when we reviewed our graduation requirements, and we noted that, well, the state of North Dakota did not require health for graduation, most public schools did. And the board at that time decided, well, if the state doesn't require it, then we're not going to require it. Now, since then, with, you know, mental health, a pandemic, you know, other issues, I have rethought, maybe, maybe we should go back to requiring it, or maybe there are alternatives, you know, as you said, they can take it as an elective, or maybe there are other means of educating students about that without requiring a class, but that's why I brought that up.
Yep, and we have to offer it. Yep, and we have to offer it by law. Just now, the way we've done in the past, if students wanted health, they would just take it online. We just said, but we might have some options coming forward for this year now, so.
Okay. Any other questions? I have one more, but it's kind of fiddly.
Mine is also. I just, under the tornado time and since in the last sentence that students in good standing will be allowed to leave school at Friday at 3:30.
Yeah. My fingers shouldn't have been 303 to think, wait, you're not getting the email. So I'm like, let everybody go up to the board back here and help me have service to respond, you guys. So it looked like I'm pretty good.
You just put that in there.
I was just checking out. I updated that. 303, hey, you guys are doing great, you're still staying safe.
The other thing to the two of both handbooks is on page 11, under the non-discriminatory, non-discrimination policy. Dr. Seinhaus' name is still included over there, so that should be changed.
Since around that tornado time. So you needed 20 minutes in the schedule to match the center, is that what?
That schedule is the same as all ITB schools and the center. So the center goes to 303 like all other ITB schools do. So, you have the moment where you're flex-mind of a kid who's taking like human anatomy last hour, their class ended at 303. And so going back to that schedule, that last tournament just feels arduous compared to what other schools have. Some other schools might end at 303, we always go to 325. And so that'll be time for, kids will be broken up into advisors. And those advisors on Wednesdays and Thursdays, I have a ramp up to readiness program. So they'll learn some study skills, learn things on how to prepare for whether going to college, two-year, four-year, or the workforce, the military. They get some of that interaction that West, it wasn't West State, it was advanced at times. Cogia now said for the high school, that was an area of improvement for us, that we need to do a better job of having deeper connections with our kids. And we've lost that while with flex-mind because kids were in and out at different times. So that's, that time now will be occurring on Wednesdays and Thursdays. And if you're wondering, well, what do they do on Mondays and Tuesdays? That'll be like a study hall or just checking in with them on how their grades are doing and doing a check-in for them for the last tournaments. And Fridays, if the kids are in good standing and the grades are in order and everything turned in, then they'll be released at 303.
So they'll move classrooms then, or they just stay in the classroom that they're in?
It depends on where they would be. So like if, if they're whole, it'd be like a homeroom. So if I have students that are homeroom with me, but some of them are gym and some of them are in art, whatever, they'll just come to me during like two or three times. Yeah.
Okay, my final question was, I noticed, I wasn't going to bring this up, but then I noticed it was in the handbook. Graduation honor stalls. Interestingly, a parent brought this to my attention within the last few days that our honor stalls no longer say honor. That was brought to my attention like immediately. And so, and I don't know when that changed.
It didn't. I, as soon as I got your question, I texted Katie, I'm on the more. And I'm like, hey, what, when, did, we always had honor on there, right? And she goes, yep, she goes, I just like to look like this or the wrong ones. Didn't even, I didn't even notice it when we're going through graduation, graduation practice. So it wasn't something we changed intentionally to just to screw up on our organizational, but you're right, they should say honor.
Okay, and additionally, this has bothered me for a number of years. I can't remember when it started that all students, all graduates got a stall. And, you know, I happen to bring the graduation pictures, and if you look at this, everybody looks like an honor student, don't they? And, and it's not like the honor students have a nice gold one and the rest are black or white or something. They're orange. And that has bothered me for some years because, I, I mean, what's wrong with, if you're an honor student, you get a stall and if you're not, you don't.
That's the easy fix. I don't know how long everybody's had a stall, or that's that criteria, we haven't got a background on that, I don't even know how long that's occurred. But I have no problem if you're an honor stall, you're the one wearing a stall and everyone else has just three, four big phone calls that are missing.
I don't know that that needs an adjustment to the handbook, but, you know, it was brought to my attention and others, obviously. So, I mean, I'm glad we have the opportunity to address it. Any other questions for Mr. Beta on the seven to 12 handbook? If not, let's move on to Mrs. Sell and the elementary handbook.
I think I highlighted anything.
Tony, or not Tony, but Shelly had a question about K through six FIA. So I just kind of changed the wording of it. I put in grades K through three, the students need to wear what they wore from school, plus gym shoes. Students in grades four through six are encouraged to have some type of gym shorts, t-shirt, gym shoes, towel. They suggested that they shower after gym class. The gym shoes need to be made of non-marked holes. I know we would prefer, and I think the teachers would prefer that they change clothes and shower, but at that age, it's really hard to get them to do that at all times, but it sure makes the rest of the day rather smelly when they don't, you know?
The other thing that it's doing there too is it also helps with teaching the proper hygiene.
Correct, yeah.
You know, if we're teaching our kids to not shower after they're all sweaty, it's not also teaching them.
You're not even making players to show them, so it's a nice.
No. So whereas, I kind of wanted to just leave that that they're very encouraged to have those. Because they earn, they earn FIA for 16 minutes, one of the first hours of the day, so then they go through the rest of the day with the same clothes on. I realize we're not going to get them all to do that, but if they would, it would be a lot better for us.
Any other questions regarding the elementary handbook, second reading? Final approval? If not, other than the changed.
Wait, you did have. Oh, good. So, they're not going to be allowed to have devices out on the playground?
Right.
They're still allowed to have them in the lunch line and.
Yeah, they, they'll still be able to. I don't think this year that you were going to, I never see K through three. We don't see it four through six because sometimes the line gets fairly long, so they have them. So they, we are going to allow them to have them in the lunchroom. But this year, we're going to change enough our schedule so they don't have as long in the lunchroom. So, I don't think we're going to eat as much as, it's amazing the status of this for those kids at that age in four through six.
Why they even have them, it's not even a different conversation.
And it is, it is a problem in the playground this question because some of them were using them almost as weapons out there. And I mean, in a, in a mental way, like we have kids that were taking pictures of other kids and sending it to parents to tackle on, on other kids. So that's why we decided we're not going to, they're, we, they, we're not supposed to have their iPads out there that they have this. Another problem for me is if they're using their school device, that's filtered, right? But this is not filtered, so I would get questions from parents like, why are they on Snapchat during the middle of the day? And I'm, that's on the parents. When they buy this device for their child and they're on their plan, they can get on anything. We have no control over that, you know, so I would, I wish parents would just say they're not going to send phones with their kids or their devices because we have so much control over it if they're not, if that won't happen. Because almost every kid in four through six is amazing, has one of these.
Making them check them at the door and they can pick them up when they leave, but.
But we're a one-to-one school, so I, why do they need them in the first place?
Exactly.
If there's a concern or troubles or anything like that, they should be coming to the office or, doesn't every classroom have a phone as well? So, I'm not quite sure, I'm understanding why we have cell phones allowed in the school, period.
It is amazing the progression that we've done.
Shouldn't we be looking at?
It might be. At this point, I don't want to make that kind of a change. Send up the door before I get started here, but.
It's amazing, it's a huge issue.
Yeah, and it's amazing the progression that we've gone through because we used to not have phones at all. And then the pressure from parents to have their kids, our, their phones will go off during the middle of the day because parents are calling kids during the middle of the day. And even though they might be in their lockers or somewhere, their phones are going off. And for my kids, I would say nine times out of 10 is a parent because their peers are in school, right? And they, now in the classrooms, they don't get to have their phones. They can't use their phones unless the teacher allows them to. And then some of the classes, it's used, like in Mrs. Warren's, she'll do hoops on it, she'll do, you know, and the kids choose to use their phone because that's their device that they do it. But the backlash from parents when we try to, it's, it's amazing. I bet you, if we took phones away, you guys would be hearing for the minute that this board meeting got out. Because it's their right to have their kids with their phones and they want to get hold of their kids. And, yeah, it would be awesome if we could have a phone-free zone in here, you know, but. And then the problem is though, once you say that, you have to discipline for it and you have to watch for it and everybody has to. And then kids are sneaking their phones and it becomes, where it overcomes everything else, you know? Because then my teachers are the phone police. And that's what I always say to them, do you want to be the phone police? And nobody wants to be the phone police because, you know, you can't even look in their phones. Like if a kid's phone goes off, if I, it happens to be on my desk, I'll just push as far away from me as I can because I can't go into that phone and look at it. So, it's, yeah, phones are awesome, but phones are an issue too. But then it's also hard because that's for my teachers, that's our main communication. So if something goes wrong in the classroom or like a pair or on the playground, they use their phones. So we all have our phones too, so.
Well, let's continue to monitor it and, you know, take direction from, from our administrators and we can adjust it later. Okay, and any other questions on the high school or elementary handbook? If not, is there a motion to approve a second reading and final adoption of both the high school, or seven through 12 rather, and elementary handbooks for 2021?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Rosendahl moves to approve. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries and the handbooks are approved. Next is the first reading of the 21-22 Employee Personnel Handbook, which is primarily just links to the online policies. Anything you want to highlight there, April?
Nope, I went through, made sure all the links worked. And then, as you noticed, there's some administrative regulations in there, which are not on the website. And so I kind of highlighted them. And then in the context, they just have to contact me to get a copy of that regulation.
Okay, Mr. Getz, any comments with your experience in other districts or does this, everything look okay to you?
I mean, obviously I'll still grow into this, but for now I have nothing.
Okay, and again, there's, there's an acknowledgement form which each employee would need to sign. And this applies to both our classified staff as well as our licensed teachings.
So anyone who gets a paycheck from me, I make them sign it. So coaches, the hourly staff, classified staff, anybody who, who gets a paycheck. Ultimately, that's part of their payroll forms that I give them.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion to approve as a first reading the 21-22 Employee Personnel Handbook as presented? Nagel moves the approval of a first reading of the personnel handbook. Is there a second? Heimbach seconds. Is there any discussion? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next we have, and you received this, I believe, by email yesterday afternoon, the activity handbook. Since we do not currently have an activities director, Mr. Getz reviewed and made a couple of proposals to this and we're only looking at this as a first reading.
Yep, and I also asked the two administration.
Okay.
They have been here and they know what's.
Yep. I think you made one kind of, oh, now I'm looking at it.
There's a couple.
Oh, okay.
I'm just changing the understudy in the school attendance, it changed, there was a mod still in there, so we changed it to class. Under eligibility, this is kind of a proposal to throw out there and I've talked with a few people and prior experience, when you start working, as my coaching experience came out in this a little bit, when you have eligibility run from a Monday to a Monday, if you're preparing for a game all week long or a Friday, basketball game, and all of a sudden you have a Monday basketball game, you prepared for that game on Friday and now the kids come in there ineligible and that could end up totally changing your whole game plan. So I would just make it a recommendation to still hold, run the eligibility on Monday, just like normal. So the teachers aren't changing anything on that aspect. But to give the eligibility, the time that the kids would be ineligible would be Wednesday to Wednesday. So that way, you would have that Wednesday practice, make any changes if you need to for the Thursday game. It gives you that time. And I, I know a lot of people said that it really doesn't affect anybody. At this point in time, it hasn't. It's because you don't have games on Monday except for football, the junior high and JV football. But you do have a new AD coming in, but change all that. So it just gives that flexibility to where if you do have a Monday game, you're not having to change your whole game plan up during the school day. So that was probably a big change there. And if you have any questions on that, please ask.
I would say we've had Monday boys' basketball games, girls' basketball games, volleyball games, haven't we?
Yeah. Okay, just from what I was told, it doesn't happen, so.
And this is just a first reading and hopefully by the next, by our next meeting, I'm hoping that we have an activities director in place and can review and update. I could have one little question. I noticed that it said for cross-country, of course, we're in a cross-country cooperative with Sergeant Central and Ligerwood. And that our students would pay, or maybe, and maybe that's in the fee schedule, but somewhere it said that those students, athletes would pay their activity fee to Sergeant Central. And I was reminded that, of course, we have a, we have activities, a baseball cooperative with Sergeant Central and North Sergeant. And it's my understanding that those student athletes paid their activity fee to their own school and that Oakston doesn't charge anything to those districts to participate in our co-op. And so that was inconsistent and I may not be right, so I just ask that you would check that out. And it, I, you know what, I made a note on it, but now what I'm looking at, my charts don't show up, so.
I'll try and find it, but just so that way I can go back and see what it's.
If you can't, then I'll, I'll, I'll have. Oh, it's under participation fees on page eight of the handbook, the last item for cross-country participants will pay. And that's fine for those students to pay their fees to that school. It just seemed inconsistent with. But we have to follow whatever our cooperative agreement is with the schools. But it might be appropriate to bring that whenever we revisit those.
Yep, and that brings me to the next big thing that I've added into here. A lot of the schools that I've went to over the years, there's always been a cool down period. So that basically after, and I never found anything in here, to where after a game, a parent or a student or participant can't come to the coach and start saying, you did this wrong, you did that wrong. This has to be changed, this has to be, you have to have that cooling out period. So it gives you a 24 hours for our coaches to give them that chance to kind of understand what they did wrong, but it also lets the parents kind of understand that, okay, is this truly something I want to take to or is it not? It gives them that time to cool down, so emotions aren't part of this conversation, it's actual conversation. Does that make sense? So that was a big piece that I was adding there as well. I don't think there was much other than that. Do you, Brandon? And Anna? Those were the changes.
Alright, is there a motion to approve this activities handbook as only as a first reading? Monica Heimbach moves to approve the first reading of the activities handbook. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Is there any further discussion? Questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Why don't we take E, F, G, and H as a single motion? I don't see anything at all controversial designating the Oaks Times as the official newspaper, designating the Garden Bank North and First Bank Credit Union as depositories, designating the superintendent as the authorized representative for federal programs and as Cheyenne Valley Special Ed Unit Representative. Without objection, is there a motion to approve those four items?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thorp moves to approve those four items. Is there a second?
A second.
Rosendahl seconds, is there any discussion? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Appoint board representative to the Southeast Region Career and Tech Center Board, Sheila Nagle has been our rep for a number of years. It's, I served on that board, it's a very interesting board. Are you uh willing and able and desiring to continue on that board? Okay, um, is there a motion to appoint Sheila Nagle then to the Southeast Region Career Tech Center Board? Heimbach moves to appoint Sheila Nagle to the Southeast Region Career Tech Center Board, is there a second?
A second.
Thorpe seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion carries. Uh, the next item is to appoint a representative to the Dickey County Job Development Authority Board. I think in 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 practice or in in reality, this is a recommendation to the county commission uh who officially appoints the board. And I have served on that board, I think for maybe three years, I am willing to continue in that position. If anybody else would like to do it, please speak up, otherwise I would entertain a motion for appointment of me or whoever.
I'll make that motion to appoint Sonia.
Uh, Rosendahl moves to approve Sonia, uh, to appoint Sonia Neal as to the Job Development Authority Board, is there a second? Nagel seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion passes. Now, to set the regular board meeting day and time, we have traditionally been meeting at 7:00 AM on the second Tuesday of the month, is that working for you, April? As far as having things prepared, um, board members, um, sometimes it just seems it's it's, I I always say I'd like to have that packet a week before, but even as early as I get it, I rarely look at it until the Sunday before meeting anyway, so.
I like reviewing it like right before the meeting because then it's fresh, but so it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter to me if it came out two weeks or three days.
As long as it, you need three or four days if you have any questions or anything, I mean, the times when we get Thursday before Tuesday would be, at least then you got the weekend to look at it.
And and it doesn't bother me if some items come earlier and then others get added later, but then I I try to download my packet and it's easier for me to mark up then and save and then then it gets to be a jumble, but what's going on for me is working. Is there any, any thoughts that we should meet at any time other than 7:00 AM, is that, is that workable for you?
It's not ideal during harvest, but we will make it work.
Well, Robert loves it during harvest.
Because he doesn't have to come away from it.
Well, our our harvest starts at the end of July, so.
And goes through September?
The end of October.
Rounds are good. All right, so um, I'm not hearing any other suggestions, so um is there a motion then to continue with our regular board meeting day and time to be the second Tuesday of each month beginning at 7:00 AM? Nagel moves to uh set the regular board meeting day and time to be the second Tuesday, 7:00 AM, is there a second?
A second.
Thorpe seconds, is there any discussion? I would just say that I have my regular state board meetings are typically this third Monday or Tuesday if Monday is a holiday and there was some discussion about trying to change that, but that's almost impossible given that Superintendent Beasley is on something like 14 state boards and so trying to change one board meeting for her schedule is very difficult. So um, if if that happens, I will try to steer away from the second Tuesday and and from time to time we do change because number one, at least for the the election canvassing law, state law said we had to meet six days after, which was dumb and I think has changed, maybe.
Uh, yeah, it's changed to 13 days after. So we'll probably end up having a special meeting just to canvas the votes.
Yeah, and otherwise occasionally something comes up and we do have to change, but we discuss that in advance. All right, is there any further discussion regarding the meeting date and time? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Then we go to back to the packet of fees. Lunch, lunch is on the packet. In the packet, but it's not listed.
And I think part of that is because it's free this year.
Is it free to? All students but not adults?
Yeah, so USDA has granted another program in which they'll provide free lunches for all students. Breakfast and lunch, basically, so there will be no charge to students this upcoming school year, but um as prior, the staff, adults have to be charged. So there's so technically there still is a lunch fee, it's just that we're zeroing it out basically this year, so there'd be no changes in the lunch pricing.
Okay, so we don't even need to act on that, it's not on our agenda, but it is in our packet.
Yeah, so yeah, it's just on the fee sheet and so, but yeah, so there'd be no changes automatically to those lunch fees.
Okay, board, how do you want to handle this? Do you want to take each item individually? Do you want to discuss each item individually and act on them one time? That seems like it would be an efficient way to go. Thoughts? Our first item is activity admission, um, which is admission prices of on in our packet, grades one through 12 are $4 for activity admission, adults are $6. I don't know. Activity passes, which would be included, I suppose, in activity admissions, family $150 a single, 70 and seniors age 16 over, we, a couple of years ago, we, it was longer than that, we gave uh an appreciation of their seniority status, we gave them a little deal. Any input on that? If not, go ahead, April.
I know there's really been no um feedback or complaints about our fees. As far as I know, that's come to me. I know the two fees that have been in, have been discussed in last year were computer insurance fees and then the driver's ed fee. Those two are ones that I've kind of researched a little, I've been asked to look into, otherwise the rest of them, no one has really said anything to me about any of the other fees.
Uh, I would say that our admission prices are on par with other places that I've attended and not unreasonable at all.
I'll just add too, it don't matter what you raise it to, you're still not going to cover some of the sports anyways.
Driver's ed is what I want to look at. If we're looking at updating our vehicles every, how many years is it again?
They have to be within five months.
I, I think we need to adjust our fees.
And we, from time to time, give our drivers ed teachers a raise as well, which is appropriate, so um let's look, let's go down our list here, substitute teacher pay, um, are we, I think we're competitive. Sheila, did you set, did the career tech center sets their daily pay, do you remember, or will that happen?
I do, we did.
I suppose that will be at that July.
We left it the same, I believe, we did it, we did it. No, no, we didn't do that one, we did the board, I'm not sure why we did the board already.
I, I mean, I don't know what other districts are doing nearby, but I think we try to stay competitive.
We actually, the area business managers just sent me um a fee for a substitute sub-rate. And hold on. I'll just share it with you guys. We don't include a free lunch, everyone else does though. But we are comparable.
Okay. So we are competitive, um, and if and if anyone wants to suggest that we change, that's fine. Not hearing anything. Yearbook, uh, we sell, I guess, each year fewer and fewer and fewer yearbooks. But I think we still need to have them. Participation fees. There they are, um, so in elementary, grades five and six, $10 per activity. Volleyball, girls' basketball, boys' basketball and archery, uh, with football, fourth, fifth and sixth grade football, I'm guessing they pay a little fee to the linebackers?
Yes.
Okay. Grades seven and eight, $35 per sport. Nine through 12, $45 per sport, and there are maxes on both of those and there's a separate one for archery now. Didn't we a few years ago, I thought we added like competitive music and speech would also have a fee?
They are considered that sport, so they still, um, so like drama, speech, they have to pay that $45 with their maximum, 90.
And then the music, um, so technically it's not per sport in grades seven through 12, it's per activity. Or maybe, maybe, yeah, maybe only nine through, well, there's junior high speech. Okay. Any comments on that one? Then computer insurance, uh, oh, did I skip driver's ed? I'm sorry, I did. So you wanted to address, Sheila, you wanted to discuss driver's ed. Do you have comparables on that, April, for area districts?
Yep, that's what I'm looking for now.
I had pulled it up the other day too.
I don't remember how long it go, it was.
That was back when we were starting negotiations, not sure. A lot of them were at 125, if my memory serves me, wasn't it, April?
I would say that that's probably more comparable, um, the $100 is probably one of the lower ones in the state. And then if you look at outside agencies, I think they're right around 400 or 400.
So like hiring a private teacher.
Right, if you go to Fargo, wherever you're you're going to outside, plus you're going to have to drive there, um, which cause, yes.
Well, and plus we've added value to our program in that we now have our teachers qualify, our teachers qualified to administer the test and and grant the license. And that is a great savings to our families because they have to make an appointment months and months in advance and take a day off or half a day off work to drive to Jameson or Fargo, so I I think we're justified in increasing that.
Another thing to just kind of throw out there too, that I've seen in other schools is if you're in district but you're taking it for the second time because you didn't pass the first time, they usually increase that for the second time. Just something to throw out to you too, I don't know what what other schools around the area do, but.
Good information.
Of a district where it's a second or third dynasty, which I think.
How often does that happen?
There was so many this year that were.
I had one in my whole curriculum teaching it.
Really?
There wasn't there like three or four that were repeating?
I think there's a couple of times where she's, I wanted to fail a kid, not so much for not getting content, but from the habits or stuff like that, not like that.
Oh, so that might be a, yeah, okay.
They show up late. And I think she would just take a couple of kids out this year and say, you can't, there's not going to be able to do it all. So if she or he or she would come back, then I agree, you should increase the fee.
Okay, thank you.
If you do that, I would maybe make that leeway one year so that the public knows that you're not just bringing something onto them. But it is something I would definitely look at.
I would feel a little more incentive for the parents to get their things there as well, yeah.
All right, um, so would somebody like to make a proposal and then we'll we'll make that, uh, we'll make this all on motion to adopt all these fees, but what, let's get this one fleshed out here. Should we propose to increase it to 125 in district, is that?
Yes.
High enough? Was that enough?
No.
No, it's not enough, 135, 150?
At least 150.
Your next career. And I think out of district should go lower. Okay, so we're, are we saying 150 for in district or a second time? And then everyone, that would begin next year, so everyone, every student next year would be considered their first time unless it it, you know, every, so they don't, if they're repeating it next year, they're considered their first time. Okay, so 150 in district, 400 out of district, that's our proposal that we're going, and and 150 and for second, second, second or third time. And you can't take it for it. All right, uh, then let's move on then to the computer insurance, what does your research show on that or your fee public people? Well, I think we'll go to all at one time, but that will will recap everything before we go. Okay, um, that's okay, no, don't worry about that.
I do know computer insurance is brought up all the time, uh, we've had, um, we need work on our acceptable policy, our acceptable use policy agreement, um, we've had, and Brandon can relate, there is a couple of seventh graders that went through two or three laptops last year. We at one point, but did Larry say, we had what, 28 iPads out for screen repairs? So we think that the fee needs to be adjusted along with our agreement and policy. So I don't know if this is something that maybe we should wait and get more information from Larry on and work on a proposal for next month.
That's reasonable, thank you. So so we're going to defer action on the computer insurance and we'll adopt that then with the, do we review and adopt the acceptable use policy if there is going to be changes to it?
Yep, we will, yeah.
I have a question on that, Anna, will you guys be sending them home again this year or will they be staying in class? Because I know that was a big issue in elementary when those were going home every day.
Our plan was to keep them in, but you know, there might be um a time or two where maybe they need to go home or somebody's, I don't know what's going to happen with COVID, let's say somebody positive for COVID, which could happen, right? They probably won't be able to come to school, so they might have to go home, so that's our tool to go home. But it's surprising that most of the damage happens here at school, carrying back and forth to walkers, they just don't take really good care of them, which is that sad, right? It's just become something that they, you know, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, then we're going to have one motion on the 2122 fees. The only changes from what's in your packet then would be that we propose to increase in district driver's ed fee to $150, out of district or second or third time taking the class to $400 with one year of grace on the second, so everybody next year will be at first time or even if it's the second time. Uh, and we're deferring action on the computer insurance, so items I through six, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve those fees. Second or third, second, third or fourth, repeated, yes, yes, of course.
I will make the motions.
Nagel moves to approve the fee schedule with the adjustment that we discussed for driver's. Nagel moves to approve the fee schedule with the adjustment that we discussed for driver's ed and deferring action on computer insurance. Is there a second? Heimbug seconds. Any further discussion? We've discussed pretty thoroughly. So anything else, any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries. And we'll have computer insurance on the agenda next time. Next, we're gonna turn to staffing and I think I'll turn this all over to Mr. Getz. I, I don't have the activities director job description in my packet. Did that come out?
It said mine.
Okay. I downloaded my chat. No, no, I, I've seen it.
She's got a pick. So one of the things that I'm gonna just kind of throw out there as a thought, and I don't know what you guys have had discussions before. Obviously, we haven't had anybody apply for the part-time position. It is a very big job for a part-time position. I'm not gonna lie, it's, it's something that even in a smaller school takes up and consumes almost all of the time. And I've seen where you, we've pushed, schools have pushed that on to administration and administration spends all their time in activities and they forget about, and not, they forget about it so that they don't have time to do their actual job of the administration. So it scares me a little bit to start pushing that on to administration and forcing that direction. I, I'm gonna caution you to do that because especially with being in the personalized competency-based learning here, I think that's important that we're having our administration working strictly with that. And not having to worry about activities. I am throwing out a thought to maybe increase that to a full-time position. And that's why you'll see the job description has changed and has probably lengthened from what is the original. I know it's longer than what's the original was there, but some of the other duties to add to that is this person would also be going out and soliciting to try and get more funds to help cover some of our activities. So if, just some thoughts, quick thoughts, doesn't mean that it's limited to that, but I know Brandon had brought up a good example of they used to have where the farmers could donate a truckload of of their feed or seed to the school, so then that would go towards that activities as well. Another thought would be is in our programs, we would sell advertisements so that you could go out and try and do other advertisement, and that would be part of their job as well. And then also they would be available to sell if we were in need of that, just as like our administration does have to sub sometimes because we're short. It would give us another opportunity to have another person for that position. Am I missing anything else there that I was kind of talking to you about? Those were some big ones.
Yeah, I, Mr. Getz and I collaborated on this and I don't want you to think that I'm pushing it.
This has come from me.
And, but, you know, I think I gave you maybe at the last meeting, but Monica, you weren't here, so you know, going back to, see, I'm ancient history since I started my 10th year. When, when I started, Mr. Warren, who was at that time the high school principal, was the AD and I think he got an additional like $5,000. I think that was his salary. Maybe it was six or maybe it increased a little bit. When he departed in the middle of a year, then it was assigned to, at that time, Jason Schmitz, who was a high school social studies teacher. So he would have been paid to be the AD for the pro rep, he would have been paid the pro rata remainder of the year. In addition to that, his teaching load, I believe, was reduced by one or two classes. So really, his compensation included that one-sixth or two-sixths of, because he was still paid his full teacher's salary, but given a little bit of extra, more extra time. He finished out that year and then he left and then Brandon, I believe you took it on for a year and then came two years. And Brandon, I remember you coming to the board and saying, you know, you had done some research, I think particularly rugby, was being $7,500. That's a school comparable to our size. And quite honestly, you know, and it has increased since then. I think our base is 11, 11.5 or something like that. And then when Brennan was doing it, no, when Sheri was doing it, as a teacher, she also had her teaching load reduced. So the compensation was truly more than that. And so to try to get someone to take this on when, when really it's, there's a lot of stuff that doesn't get done. It's just a bigger job than what, than what the compensation covers. I don't see that we're going to get anyone to take it on as a standalone part-time job.
It'd be pretty tough. And the hard part is, is like I said, if you have a game cancel, you could spend all day, sometimes two days, trying to reschedule everything because you've got the refs, you've got all the, the people that are working it, you've got transportation, sometimes you have to deal with, there are just so many things that it's become a bigger job than what it used to be is basically, and it's the same as administration. Everybody's job keeps getting more and more piled to it, but we never take anything away. And I, I think this is just another prime example. It's, it's too much for what you're trying to ask people to do. And that's why you're not seeing that great of what.
So what are your thoughts? I mean, as this piece of a position, he and I have talked about, okay, so the negotiated agreement, we've added a strength and conditioning coach. We have a head girls' basketball coaching position open right now. I view those as pretty separate positions with three separate salaries, but potentially could be held by one person. So what, as a standalone, what do you propose this new expanded position might?
It's hard to say. I don't, and I hate to throw numbers out to you without doing more research, but I would say that we would want to be comparable to an administration salary because of the hours that they're going to be working. I mean, in, in this job description, there, there's at every home event, they're gonna be closing up, they got a lockup. There are some pretty big duties that they're being required to do with this on top of their daily job. So I would say comparable to what you're paying the principals. I don't say now, I'm saying what you would start them out with. I would say somewhere comparable to that. The thing to also help with this is Brendan has done a great job of working with our science teaching to where we're possibly eliminating, or we are eliminating one science teaching position, so that helps cover some of those expenses as well. I, I just think if you're gonna go too low, you're also, again, you're not gonna get somebody because there, there's a lot of times they're gonna be in the school, and I'm thinking basketball season, that they could be in the school till 10, 11 o'clock almost every night of the week. That's part of their job, and that's why I'm saying that if we were to make this a teacher's salary, we're really probably gonna be missing the boat simply because of they're working during the day and they're working all night. So it's a big job.
And weekends.
And weekends. And you never know, they could be getting a phone call in the middle of the weekend, the bus broke down. Now that's lining up to get a hold of Dave to get somebody out there. But I would go to that athletic director to make that first phone call contact. He also has to contact parents and like, no, because the coaches on bus, more than likely, can't be able to do that. There's another job that we don't think about on a day-to-day basis. We just think of, oh, it's just a job, you know? There's a big picture to that job that a lot of people are missing. So I would, I would recommend right around the same as what a starting principal in the district would be making. That'd be my recommendation. That doesn't, that's you guys can make, I don't call, but.
Do you have comparisons as to what a, a position, somebody like Northern Cass, Central Cass, which are a little bit bigger schools than us, that maybe have someone in a role like this?
Do that, I just have not, just because I didn't know really where this was at. I guess I should have probably brought that thinking that you were, I'm gonna propose this.
At how many schools have a standalone?
It, it's gonna become more and more as time goes, because of the same concept as where we're at. We can't find anybody. And I think you're gonna start to see it happen more and more to where I know, and I just think back to my, my home high school of St. Mary's, of 400 kids. We, they started out with a, a science teacher who was the AD coach, or the AD, and then he moved into a full-time AD just because the job has grown that much. And that's a 400 kids. And we're at 500. Yes, I know it's K-12 here, but I also have been committed to where this is taking over those elementary programs. It's not two separate people anymore. It's one person that we go to instead of breaking it out, because I think you've done some of the elementary, am I right on that?
Very little.
Okay.
They used to have it separate, though, and it was, it was a mess.
Right. And so you're, you're starting to bring everything back to one person that they talk to when it comes to that. And I think you're gonna start to see more and more. Are you in the forefront of that? Probably. I, I think you're, we're still on the starting stages of that, but you're gonna start to see more and more of that full-time AD. I have done some research more so on the side of administration or having somebody in-house take over that position. A friend of mine, Brad Vick, Hop and Underwood does as a superintendent AD, and he flat out says, don't do it. Absolutely. Because I was looking at, if we don't find anybody, could I do this job? And he's like, no, it's just, it's too much. And there's too much crossing over that you're starting to see where administration's starting to stay away from it. Because if you get in trouble as the AD, it now affects your principal or superintendent spot. And I know, I've talked with Mr. Sorley over in North Sargent, because I know he also did the, the two jobs, and he again said, no, this is, it's too much. It's become too much of a job. And as way, keep adding activities and then also as districts get smaller around us, there's call-ups that you're now having to work with, so that person also work as that more. It just, it's becoming a bigger job than what it was even five years ago. I don't know if that makes sense to you.
Yeah.
And that's why I say that we're on the tipping edge, but I think it's a matter of time before more and more happen.
I would like to see the comparables.
Yeah.
Because you, to me, I see our proposed budget. And then I, I hear that and we're talking $60,000, $70,000 compared to $11,000. It's a huge, huge difference. Not saying I'm against it, but I'm, that's, at first sight, that's that's a huge shift in what we're doing, or what we've been doing. Yeah, the comparable to what other, what can we see from, what can we expect? Or what's it gonna take to get somebody to do it full-time would be the question, too.
And yet, it would be nice to make a decision today to be able to get advertising, get somebody in place, so.
And I can tell you that, like I said, the science teaching position has been reduced, so there, there is some reduction there. I, I know that the budget is showing that we're gonna be upside down, that, that seemed to be across the district, I mean, across the state, because of the simple fact that over the last two bienniums, this incoming money from the state has only been 0 or 1%, but we're still giving out 3% and 5% and raises. And there's, it's catching up to everybody. So it's not just here that you're starting to see that. I think that's gonna become a more common, common theme. As the state continues to give 0 or 1% increase in state funding, you're gonna see more and more of that separation. So you do have, the science teaching position would be roughly 41 plus 11.5 would put you right around that 50, or am I out, 52 roughly?
So, and it would, would seem to be a little bit more palatable to me if we're talking about more like a starting teacher's salary rather than a starting administrator's salary. And, and, and yes, indeed, this position would be expected many times to be here till 9, 10 o'clock at night, but yet they would also not be expected necessarily to be here at 8 o'clock or 8:30 in the morning.
There's gonna be a lot of days that they will be.
So in this position, they would get TFFR also?
I believe so, yes.
If they're, if they have a teaching license, if they don't have a teaching.
I would have to do some research on that.
Okay.
It, it kind of depends because if they don't have, I mean, it's not really an administrative position.
Right.
They still are going to be having to answer to the principals and myself. Obviously, they report to me, but they would still have to be working with them and doing that side of things. The other thing with this, like I said, the big piece to helping with this is to bring in those additional funds. I think that's a big piece that is missing, where if we can get even half of the athletics paid for, we've well exceeded what you're gonna have for the salary. And, and when I say advertisement, yes, we would have our local advertisement, but I'm also thinking going out to Fargo, Grand Valley City, these places that all these surrounding, surrounding communities that are coming here, we have a chance to sell advertisement there as well. Because any school that's coming here, we wanna go and try and advertise anywhere. That, that's my opinion. Is it gonna make it, work it? I don't know, but.
Well, at the Career Check Center, in the past, we've had students take us, have the opportunity to take a sports marketing program, and I've long thought that there's an opportunity there for someone like this to work with students and make it an additional educational opportunity to, you know, here's how we sell, you know, here's how we market ads, because that would be applying what they're learning in the classroom. Now, if we look at this as a potential AD position as a standalone, and, but then you also have the opportunity to perhaps have that strength and conditioning. What, what, that's a head coaching salary, is it not?
Do you remember, that's what we did, wasn't it, April? Head coach salary.
As, as a starting, but if they have coaching experience, I would, they would get steps added. And then potentially a head girls' basketball coaching position, if that's of interest or in, in their ability. You know, that could stack up to a pretty decent salary, even with the lower beginning. I mean, not with not a, an administrator beginning salary, but it's more work, too.
Right. So maybe I should step back and ask you, because I'm used to a lower, I'm thinking of when, when I say starting administration salary at $60,000. And maybe you guys are a lot higher here than what I was thinking, so maybe I should step back and say, what is a starting principal roughly rate there? And to be honest with you, in the, it would be nice for the advertisement, but at the same time, it would be negotiable because that's what it's saying there in the job description.
30 teachers or 42.5, April?
I knew teachers are 42.5, but I didn't know administration's starting.
42.2, yeah.
And if, if you advertised as starting teacher's salary and you had someone of interest, I, I think it's fairly likely that you would have experienced, excuse me, teachers' interests. It wouldn't be limited to teachers, but then you could conceivably add their five or 10 years of experience on, like you would if they were a teacher.
My concern would be what if you hire somebody that's not a teacher? Because that's, that's potentially can happen with that.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't have to be a teacher. I know that there's other ADs, even in the big districts, there's ADs that are not teachers. They don't have a teaching license. It's, they're coming in as a sports side of things. It's not. And that's ideally what you would want with this. It would be somebody that's more sports-minded rather than.
Activities. Activities.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry.
A broader view.
When I say sports, I mean.
You would require them to get their sub license.
Yeah, well, yes, I would. Yeah. I believe that was part of the job description as well.
We, we talked about it and I don't remember if you left it or not, but I think that we.
Yeah. The AD must hold a substitute license to cover classes for coaches, advisors leaving for events and as needed by the principal. But it would be, there would be that addition there that if we need one, a sub position there, too. I feel like I'm trying to sell this too much.
I don't know if I missed it, but I mean, this is the first that I've.
Yeah.
I didn't see this previously.
I didn't see this, you know, before the pack, so this is.
I think, I think it was sent out in an email because it was kind of, we were still working on it and maybe it all in the first packet, am I right on that, April? That was one that was sent later, because we were still trying to finalize everything, make sure it would. It, it stated closely, but don't get me wrong, that doesn't mean that we can't still change the AD position, so.
No, I've had, I was trying, it's just, it's a big, you know, it's a big budget issue.
I hate to wait until our next meeting, but I do think we need to have some more comparables. And we need to settle on at least a base starting salary before we advertise this. I, and we, I do want to try to have a board retreat, and we typically have not had, tried, we've tried not to.
You keep saying that. The last several years we have.
See, Hazel just. We have to. We have tried not to take action, a board retreat.
You can't take action for a board retreat.
Well, we have.
Everyone I've been to, we have.
Well, and, and it's been a public meeting.
Yeah.
And it's been on the agenda.
Retreats have to be public as well.
It is, and it has been public. And it's been, it's been appropriately noticed and we've taken action, but nobody's. What are your wishes?
Special meeting.
I, I, I just can't.
Sorry.
And it's okay. I mean, we're in transition here with.
I deserve it. You're all the ones you guys had last year.
Need to hear more about the science.
Yeah.
Personalized learning is something, the coaching position there, I wanted to discuss at the retreat, because that's another salary that we have going forward. For budget issues, so.
Yeah, there's just a lot of questions for me. It's how, how it'll look like. Is it gonna be standalone? Is it gonna be tied to other things? And that affects the salary, what we can be offering and not offering. Again, if it's gonna be a basketball coach, if it's gonna be a teacher, then all that is different than a base sixty or seventy thousand dollar salary. I mean, to me, that's just a, a lot of questions to me, where it's special meeting.
My other concern with it as well is if we do have, you know, we have a lot of teachers that are coaches. If one of them steps up to this position, are we gonna be left with the vacant position right?
They're under contract.
Potentially.
We'd have to release them for their contracts.
Especially with the OR salary like that, some might say.
Well, exactly, that's what I was saying.
Right. I would not have a job when you do this.
Why don't we review the rest of the staffing?
Okay.
Um, and, and please update us, it's not on here, but the science teaching position, which I thought we had covered, but maybe we don't.
Well, yeah, there was, uh, there was some tricky spots here. We had a science teacher that we had under contract, and I shouldn't say under contract, because she really didn't start or anything like that. But it was, she was from the Philippines, and one of the things that we found out is she forgot to tell her husband. That she was going to America. So we are doing some more. We have to open that position back up after, after that has happened.
Oh, just what, what else?
Welcome to our room. But, uh, so that position has been opened back up. The, the reason that we're eliminating one of the science positions is because Brandon's worked with Kayla. And she is now getting an outfield license so she can teach at the high school level, which opens her up to some more classes. And so we can cover the science position with two teachers instead of needing three. And Brandon can maybe add more to that. We, we'll just be losing one.
For physics, we won't be able to fill house, we wouldn't have enough staff, but that's such a higher level class that you could take that through distance ed and be supervised that way, since right now they only have one or two kids that are enrolled in that. So that we could basically fill all of our classes with, with two teachers besides physics. So that would eliminate one.
We don't, we don't have that teacher currently, though.
No, we've got an interview set up for tomorrow morning already.
Obviously, her husband didn't agree with it.
Yeah, we had, we thought we had it filmed, and then it changed now because of, obviously, you know, the, the husband is not gonna be right out here like that, so. We do have some interviews set up. I think we've been talking with some people locally to see what we can come up with, if there's anybody that we can pull out of retirement. There's a lot of things that we're, we have in works, but I do know we have some interviews set up for tomorrow. Excuse me, Thursday. Tomorrow is only Wednesday. I'm not used to the morning meetings, so.
All right, so how about the other staffing items that are listed here?
Elementary, paraprofessional, I'm gonna actually ask Anna to speak on that, just because she knows more of what we're looking at there.
Okay, um, so we've been, we advertise for, okay, we've gotta fill a special ed position, not ask the Tracy. But so we're gonna partner with Tracy, so we need to fill a special ed, plus our other district, because we're asking for that new district based on the personnel complaint. Um, so, um, we've gotten some applicants, but in order to work at our school, they have to have par certification, which kind of limits our pool a little bit, because they have to have a certain number of hours, or they have to pass a test, or there's something. But they have to have that in place before they can be hired by us. So we've got some applicants for it, but with your approval, then we would hire two district and a special ed. And like I said, we're gonna just partner with Tracy, so we're not gonna run two different pools and candidates. We're just gonna put them together, interview them, um, within the next couple of weeks, and hopefully have, um, two district paras and a special ed para hired.
Okay, just for your information, Monica, and refresh for everyone else. The special ed staff that work in our building are employed by the Cheyenne Valley Special Education Union. So even though they, they work here and they look like they're old public schools employees, so that's what she's talking about. But we hire some of our paras and teachers, and, and, and Cheyenne Valley hires others, so. And we have had a number of paras, and we have, um, we agreed that we, we should increase the number of district paras so that we can provide a second person on the playground for supervision at all times.
Yes, and a lot of our paras resigned, so Naomi Barrett said resigned last year, so that left open one district position. And then with this extra district position, the schedule's been made, so there will always be two guaranteed two district paras out on the playground and supervising in the lunchroom. That third one will be supervising the lunchroom. So this district para position is a lot of supervision, and the extra time will be in the classroom with kids that, any of our kids.
I guess I'm just not following it. Did we, I thought we approved that last time.
I don't know if the motion was made to approve it or not. There was the discussion. Like, yeah, it's an extra one.
But not an extra one from last one?
No.
It's the same.
It's the same extra one. So like I said, we instead of hiring just Naomi's position, we need to hire another district person. And then Tracy's gotta hire special ed, but like I said, we're gonna pool those together, so that.
So I think back in May, we approved my, uh, report of the personnel complaints. And that included that the board consider hiring a school resource officer. And then we acted separately on hiring the school resource officer. It also recommended that we consider hiring an additional para, which we have not yet acted on. Is that right? So, so now we are acting on that, so we're replacing a para who stepped down. And we are approving the hiring of an additional para, okay? So, yep, correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it wasn't.
Okay, yeah, good point, good question. So we're, we're sort of differing the activities director for the moment, but I think we can go ahead and act on the elementary para. And then, uh, do you wanna update us on girls' basketball first?
I, I've kind of held off on girls' basketball, simply because in the current activities director job description, it says that they are supposed to be included in that. So it's kind of hard to hire a, a girls' basketball coach when we don't even have an AD in place.
And if it was a volleyball or football coach, we really wouldn't need to because of the timing. And, and at this point, our assistant girls' basketball coach is working with our girls and taking them to team camps, and so the.
Yeah, things are covered, so, yeah, and that's, I agree with that. It would be different if we were being forced to, but there is no force at this time to be looking for that. So how many have applied? Um, I don't think for the head coach. I think the only one, I think there's only been one at this time. And that was through Craig, if I remember right.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm looking then for a motion to approve the hiring of an elementary paraprofessional. And we're not looking for any, I mean, we don't need a motion to hire a girls' basketball coach. We simply just aren't gonna do it yet.
Right, it's just an update order.
And, and frankly, if it's, if it's an elementary para, that's classified staff. Do, do, I'm not sure we, the board needs to approve that, but for budgetary reasons and for your justification and support, I think we should have acknowledged that we approve that.
It's an MTE, so if you guys are approving the final MTE, so I would, I would make a recommendation to make a motion on it.
Right, is there a motion to approve the addition of an elementary paraprofessional that we did not approve last week?
Additional.
Additional. I'll make the motion. Nagel moves to approve, uh, the addition of an elementary paraprofessional. Is there a second? Einbach, seconds. Any discussion?
Does that make sense why I'm asking?
Yes.
Normally, I'd be going to, if it was somebody that was resigning.
Yeah.
But because it's an additional MTE, that makes sense.
Agreed. All right.
I have a kind of related question to that. Doesn't need to be right now, but when we were doing negotiations, they had, um, talked to us about trying to get more adults in the classroom. And our recommendation to them was to set up a task force. Is that any, you guys know anything about them?
Craig said something about them, and we had talked about it, but it didn't really hit. And the teachers, they didn't, yeah.
Okay, is that where the parents involvement that you're speaking of?
No, no, just adults in the classroom.
I remember that, right, yeah.
Okay, just curious. Who's idea was that or request?
Yeah, his name just left my head. Dobitz was the one that brought it to our attention and, and.
Their negotiating team.
Yeah.
And yet.
Wanting to get more supervision to help keep the kids engaged in the classroom.
And yet, you're not hearing that from your, from the teaching staff, or?
Directly in that? No, I mean, I'm sure they're always gonna take an extra hand, you know, in the classroom. But maybe this extra person will take up, take up some of that. I, I think there's concerns more along the line of that how big kindergarten class is going to be, or how big the first grade class is gonna be, or how big the second grade class is gonna be. And I think that that's probably along those lines is maybe where it's the concerns.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to add an elementary paraprofessional. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. It's not on the agenda, but Anna, what do you have, uh, what are your thoughts right now about our kindergarten class size?
Um, it, we haven't, we're still down about thirty-five. Can I look at that while you guys are big in there?
Okay, so an item on the agenda is to approve teacher contracts, and this is because we failed to do that last month, and I've signed them all, so please, please. Uh, I'd, I'd entertain a motion to approve the teaching contracts that are, were prepared with, um, under the new negotiated agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll start my question.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Rose and Ellen moves to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two teacher contracts. Is there a second?
Second.
Thor, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Are you ready?
Yep, uh, thirty-four or thirty-five, because I got a phone call from my mom that's waiting on their summer babies. But we're, another child might, so we would be about thirty-four.
That's a goodly number. I mean, that's a nice number for two. How about our first grade group?
Um, that is, that's our, um, we, we're gonna lose some, but I don't, we don't have all those changes in power schools. So, you know, we lost some of our families, you know, sign ops and lots of big families. They're gonna make good ones, but then.
I'll, I'll wait and check on this.
As of today, we have forty-one in first grade. And fifty-two in second, second grade, but I know that, and that's three. That, that one's gonna be three, but our first grade is only two. But like I said, some of those families that ran there are going to be out of there, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, um, let's circle back. What is our, what is our plan then with the activities director position? How quickly can we, and we, we could just have a Zoom meeting, um, later this week to, uh, hear your, uh, learn what you learned about other positions. Would that be acceptable with everyone? Okay. Um, any, well, let's, let's deal with that when we get to the board retreats in the next regular. All right, so anything else with regard to staffing? Brandon, you're, we're still looking for a science teacher.
My fingers been crossed a lot of times, so.
Maybe you need to uncross something.
I don't know, something, so I'm, I'm hopeful if the interviews are coming up, we can end the quality candidate, if they can get here and form their house.
Yeah.
That should be a question on the app. To another content. Honey, I just thought you'd be okay with it. Maybe she would come along, or maybe, well, maybe that was the whole thing. She would.
Maybe she didn't want him to.
All right, moving on then to policy. Um, first reading of policies, uh, when we talked about whether or not we would appoint board, uh, committee members at this meeting, we explored our policy, and we learned that we do not have in place the recommended policy on school board committees. And so April and I and David discussed that, let's adopt this policy, and I think we can, can we, we can do it without, can we do it without a second? No, we better not do it without a second reading. But then, we, we need to have a second. Okay, so, um, I'd like to defer assigning, uh, members to board, to committees until our August meeting. So let's go through this policy, the, the, and these are the committees that we already have. Technology, who currently serves on that? Sheila and a number of staff members, okay? Negotiations is, was Sheila and Bill. Um, which I have often thought should not just be negotiations, but like personnel compensation, because they negotiate with the negotiating unit from the teachers, but also deal with administrative compensation and, and classified staff. I, but it's fine that way. Wellness is, I think, oh, good, it's up here, thank you. Um, wellness is, I think we have policy or it's required by law that we have to have that. And as long as I recall, Mrs. Dobitz and Mrs. Gebhardt have been on that. Oh, Jara Campbell, of course, is, would be new to it, but that, that's required. And Ryan, you've been on that. Have you, has that been a great burden to you, all the meetings that, that?
No, I think we met once.
Okay.
Every year you have to review the wellness policies, so that's the approval.
Okay, um, we have a facilities committee that is, uh, has, did a nice job of reviewing and updating a kind of a long-term vision plan of, uh, our facilities and grounds. So our board members are Robert and Ryan on that one. Leadership, professional development, I've been serving on that one. Curriculum. You know, the curriculum committee is truly supposed to approve our curriculum every year. And I'm pretty sure that, you know, I don't know how we even define curriculum as, because we're not approving textbooks. And, you know, teachers are out there, you know, finding resources to use, so work needs to be done in that area. Um, and then the other committees are not school board committees. So those are, so what we'd like to do today is embody in policy these committees. And so I'm looking for a motion to approve the, uh, first reading of policy BBBB. Thor moves to approve that policy. Is there a second?
A second.
Nagel, seconds. And so, um, by the August meeting, uh, please, those who are already on a committee, consider whether you are, would like to continue on that one. Monica, you know, I'm pretty flexible, you know, I often, I, I no longer have a student in the district. And so I'll, you know, I'll go anywhere you want. I want people to serve in an area that interests them and that they can really dive into and learn about, so. I, I could do without being on negotiations again, but whatever. Okay, so with that, is there any further discussion on that motion to approve that first reading? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next, we'll have the first reading with no second reading required, because there are just extremely minimal changes in the language. And this is recommended by the School Boards Association. This is a required policy. And we, uh, as you can see, it's just crossing off the word language in the title and one other place, so no, oh, and the letter N.
No, because we just, we just adopted it, and then when Julie looked at it, she said to, yes, remove the word language. So we don't need a second reading, because that's all we're doing.
Oh, we just adopted it in May, but we, we should have. Okay, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, first reading with no second reading required of policy G A. reading required of policy G A B A A. Nagel moves to approve, is there a second? Heimbug, seconds, any discussion? Any questions for discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no, motion passes. We have no existing policy review today, bounce that off.
Good thing I have an appointment at eleven, you can't.
It's already, very, and thank you principals for being here this morning, I know that it's, um, you know, your summer off, but we appreciate you being here to review and answer questions on those handbooks and other things, so anything you'd like to share with us, ask of us, report to us.
Well, the TLE is going to be finishing up their second semester, I guess it's not TLA anymore, but, um, uh, we met, uh, eight times in June here with the professors, professors came down, uh, they are going to be going to conference in August, and then we're gonna give a barbell for that, and then next semester is gonna be over in Allendale, so we'll travel all over to Allendale, uh, or the professors will go over there to Allendale. Um, the, the teachers are gonna be presenting at the conference, and, um, you guys have been invited to come, but, so, um, we've had teachers busy over the summer, they did presenting at conferences, they've been going to conferences, um, and next, uh, tomorrow, we're meeting, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Bay and myself are meeting, um, with the police department to talk about the SRO position and the curriculum and DARE, and, um, to kind of just get on the same page and figure out where I know, because Jeremy got back from training, which he did really well on, you know, the feedback that they got from him, so.
Super. Mr. Bayla?
I presume CBA. My update.
Hey, superintendent.
Um, I don't know if I have a lot, because it's, I'm so new to the area, but first thank you for inviting me into the new district, into the district. I know you had mentioned April had received the business managers, but I do want to point out that I was also on high honors, if I remember right, is that correct, April?
Yeah.
She actually did really well.
We know she's a rock star.
She is a rock star, so, um, the first community credit union is, is going to be putting on, I know we don't truly have a logo, but we're going to be, they're creating a debit card that can have, like, it has two logos on top of it, uh, the tornado and then also the, the star.
The crest.
The crest.
We call that the crest.
Okay, so those two will be on, so that'll be coming out to the, their patrons.
What tornado are they using?
I think it's the Neil, yeah. There is no real true tornado, I don't think, so I, I think that they're using the one, the old one, if I remember correctly, and I'm guessing on that, because I'm not sure where that all stands, but, um, I don't have a whole lot, I'll think I'll just end with that, um, obviously, they've talked a lot about the different things that are happening with everything, and we, and oh, and another thing, just so you guys are aware, in the future, I did do it at this meeting, but I'll take this and I'll go through it and kind of make marks on it, so that that way it helps, as my report is basically giving you kind of guidance on stuff, so if you have questions when you see that, please call me and ask me or send me an email, um, so that way I can kind of have questions prepared, or not so much prepared, but if I need to go, like, with the AD, if I would have put that on there, yes, I forget stuff, so it would have been something simple, if somebody's saying, can you give us comps for that? Perfect, I, I can definitely do that, you know, so that's why you'll see that the next, in the future, it'll be broke down a little bit more. And then I'll include everything on there, uh, I know I've talked with Sonya a little bit about this, if something to help speed up the meeting a little bit, is sometimes one would be adding Dave on there as for technology for reports, but how all the reports done as a written report, and then you guys can approve those as one, if you want to pull something out, you can pull that out, I guess you don't approve them at all, so, it would basically, everything would be written, so that you wouldn't have to take the time and listen to me talk, just like you're going now, it's all written down, unless there was something else to add real quick, but a lot of it's written, does that make sense? Saves you time.
Yeah, a few years ago, we, you know, the superintendent, a lot of times we'd get to the meeting, and then people would be, the principals would be handing out their reports and reports, so now we're inundated with all these papers when we've already reviewed a hundred and what, whatever plus-page packet, and so I really appreciated that the, the principals and AD have been submitting and including their reports as a part of the packet. That, that I appreciate, and I think we need to continue, and if there are other, you know, a technology report, a transportation and facilities report, sure, let's get them in there, and, um, we, we can start approving them if you think that's appropriate and necessary, um, but it's great to have them.
I'll redo that. Don't talk too much.
I'm sorry, I need to. A, a few years ago, you know, it used to be, we always had the minutes and all the financials at the beginning of the meeting, and when we start at seven AM, certain times of the year, I start losing, we start losing members at eight fifteen, eight thirty, so we were getting to the end of the meeting, and so, and, and, and all, like, all the good important discussion stuff was left, not that it isn't important to approve the bills and review the financials, but of course it is, but, you know, seldom is there, you know, there are questions, but often we would have already asked those questions by email to April or that time Tom, um, if we, if you want to rearrange the agenda, if you want to create a consent agenda that just says, okay, here are all the financials, we're gonna just have, add the minutes, and we'll vote one time on that, we can change things however board members would like.
And I will add to that is that I've seen, that's exactly how I've seen it for the last two schools I've been to, is it's, it's a consent agenda, so you guys are coming in, it's already done, prepared, you make one motion to approve all the board, all the reports, all the, the, um, April's information would all be approved at one time, and then you, once the motion's made, if there was something that you wanted to pull out, you would ask those quick questions, and then everything's moved on. So it just really speeds up, about five minutes, you have pretty much a lot of that quick stuff done within five minutes.
We can surely try that if we like for the next meeting, see how it goes, and we can make adjustments however we want.
I'd say we try.
Okay?
We've got, like you said, we always have the information.
Right, you guys have already reviewed it, so. It's more so just to ask those questions and.
All right, so your report is completed.
Yes.
For this meeting, and we have no committee reports, I assume.
Yep.
Okay, um, I think one thing that wasn't on the agenda that we've had several questions on, that we should address, the, the research that we've done regarding, uh, Monica's election, she's still living in the city and certainly qualified to be seated on the board as she has been, um, this morning, um, your plans, I believe, are, you have acquired or in the process of acquiring a home out of town, uh, still in the district, obviously, um, April and David and I have done research with our attorney, um, we believe we have justified, uh, first of all, there was a question as to whether we could even elect directors based on geographical areas, and we believe we've justified that we can and have been doing so properly based on two reorganizations, that one that happened in nineteen fifty-eight or nine, and then we're still seeking final, uh, we, we, we think that it was voted on again in the nineteen seventies, which, early seventies, which has established the geographic areas that we, um, have today and have been operating on. The next question is, well, what if someone moves out of the geographical district that they serve in? And I believe the answer we've received is that, um, the board may declare a vacancy, which implies that the board may choose not to declare a vacancy. At this time, it's not an issue. In the future, it probably will become an issue that we should, uh, discuss, if we act on it and, and we, we vote to declare a vacancy, then we need to fill the vacancy, we can either appoint someone, or we can call a special election. If we choose not to declare a vacancy and we discuss it, I asked this question to the attorney via email yesterday, um, well, then if we don't vote to declare a vacancy, should we vote not to, just so it's perfectly clear? And her response was, she would not do that, she would discuss it, if nobody moves to declare a vacancy and, and the board doesn't have to declare one, then Mrs. Heimbug serves. And so that is something we all need to consider in the coming months, is that something, that we should do? I'm not promoting one way or the other, I did ask if, if a motion was made in regard to declaring a vacancy, would, would that be considered a conflict of interest for you as a board member to vote on that? And she said, yes, she would consider that a conflict of interest, um, and I'm not sure how, you know, if, if you insisted that you were gonna vote, I don't know what we would do, but, um, that's the information that I have, do either of you have anything to add?
I think you hit it quick, because she, she would still be within the district, so that's why it's questionable, and that's why you guys would have that, may determine a vacancy and may not, simply because of the fact she is still in the district, she still can serve, she's just not in the right region, well, at the time of the election, she was in the right region, the election was finalized when you guys.
We can just certify the results.
Yep.
And I want to make it clear, and it's my understanding, that you were aware, you were working on the purchase, and you approached April and asked her about that, um, you know, whether you could serve it.
Indirectly.
And she wasn't sure.
Indirectly.
I mean, based on state law doesn't provide for that, and we did not immediately have.
I, I did question that, and, um, you know, at that point, we were just looking, we had no set plans in mind, but it didn't, it didn't point forward, we will not put them in houses in August, so. Actually, I didn't mean to create any.
I find it all so interesting, and it's been interesting for me to look back at those from, it's, I'm, I'm sorry to say, but I recognized almost all the names from the minutes from the nineteen fifty-eight, fifty-nine and the election, I mean, not that I was even born then, but I knew, my dad served on the board starting here the year I was born, and so this was about five years before that, and I knew a lot of those people, I was surprised that Marie Gray ran from the school board in the years. She would have made a stir, I know that, she's a woman. So that is where we are, again, I'm not promoting one or the other course of action, but welcome to the board, thank you for your interest and participation, any other questions regarding that? All right, so that brings us to future meeting dates, let's start with a special meeting later this week.
Anya?
Yes, sorry.
Go ahead, April. We need to act on the budget, so we can give the county what our levy amount is gonna be, we have to give them a dollar amount to put in that notice, so along with the hearing date, I didn't separate it out, that's my bad, um, but yeah, so we need to have a motion to approve the budget and then determine the levy amount that I need to send to Wanda.
Oh, we need to do that today, I thought we could do that on the tenth of August.
Do you want to wait to the, because then after the meeting, then I can send it to her, because the due date's the tenth, so do you want to wait till then?
Does that give, it gives you enough time?
Yep, I'll just give her a heads up and let her know that we'll do it after our meeting at seven AM, if that works.
Because I would like to see it updated with, you know, if we get the, if we reach an agreement on the AD position, and we do, or we don't have the science teacher, um, I, yeah, and I'd like to see the final, like, the, the carryover and, um, okay?
I'll let her know.
Okay, so we would like a special meeting later this week and a, a remote meeting is fine with me, um, when do you think you can be ready?
I should be ready by Friday.
Friday morning?
Unless other super twins are not getting back, but I, I should be able to make phone calls pretty quick. I just know tomorrow morning, we have interviews, or Thursday morning, there's interviews, tomorrow we meet with the SRO, so that gives me some, a few days there, just to make sure.
And is a seven AM meeting what everyone wants, or would you be interested in a noon meeting, or?
It shouldn't be.
Yeah.
Should be short.
Tell me what you want, I'm flexible, I think, but, yeah, I don't have anything Thursday or Friday that's complex, I might be remote, are remote on Friday, but that's okay.
Well, we can do Thursday, too, I mean, pressing a little harder.
What are your thoughts? I mean, the sooner we get this decided, we can get it advertised and.
Friday at noon?
Probably for ads.
It'll be Friday or Thursday at noon?
I'm okay with Thursday at noon, that's everyone else's. You can't do seven AM Thursday, right? You have.
I can, I'm just concerned that I don't get responses that you asked up.
Thursday noon, remote meeting, agenda item, activities director. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Here we go, starting out good, right? Okay, then, um, it has been our tradition to have a board retreat, at which we do not ever conduct any business whatsoever, um, some topics that I think we could take a deep dive into are the budget. Is there anything else? There's a tiny little item that, that has come up for me a few times that I'd like you to think about, and I think it's an appropriate topic for a, a retreat, but it shouldn't take too long, you know, many of us, including Bill, who's not in here anymore, has, uh, have lost a family member during our service on the board, and we, the board, the district always sends a plant or a flower arrangement, which is very nice and very appreciated. Flowers don't last very long, um, I, I believe the OEA or a teachers group, um, one thing that they did when my dad passed was they had a little collection and bought some library books, and then they put the deceased's picture in the library book, and, and at least two occasions, I've gotten a text message or an email from a parent who said, "My kid just brought home this library book that you, was given in memory of your dad," which is really cool, um, when Mr. Conklin passed here, there's been an effort, which I think you were probably all aware of, that, um, you know, let's, 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 let's give something in his honor that's more lasting, like it'd be a tree out here or a bench, and I think we should consider whether, um, well, I love to do business for the local flower shops, I appreciate having them, um, I think a more lasting memorial might be appropriate as well, so that's, just a little item food for thought.
The other effect on that is that I know that Krista does a phenomenal job in researching whoever the memorial is named, and brought home a potato book with my father and my children. I mean, she does a really good job.
And it wouldn't necessarily have to be books in every case, and we might just, you know, I can see even accumulating, you know, a certain dollar amount all year, and, um, then having a group that decides, here's what's gonna happen, maybe, maybe it's a scholarship, maybe it's, you know, maybe it's something different, but, um, considering something else, so that would be my little suggestion for a short retreat topic. And the budget, anything else?
Uh, the leadership.
The V CBL.
Yeah.
So memorials.
Strategic plan.
And what?
On my note, I had strategic plan, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
From you or Craig.
Okay, let's do, uh, memorial, strategic plan, um, personalized learning coach and budget, and I think that's an order, that's a good order, because I think, you know, using, get, going through the strategic plan leads to personalized learning, does that fit with our plan, um, and the budget needs to support our strategic plan, so that should be plenty, unless somebody else has something else that we should cover. All right, so now, that's, that's the hard part, now the easy part is to find a day. Yeah. Sheila, you usually have a little vacation planned this time of year, Robert, you go to Horsholz or something out of the States, Wes, Wes, you start.
I'm on the first week of August.
Oh, okay.
No thing called a church.
Oh, you're going on the church. Oh, you're going on the church.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm seeing a little window, the 28th, 29th, 30th. And, and this one we've done often in the evening.
The 29th and 30th, I will be out of town.
What's everybody doing tonight? About next week? Wait, it already is this week. No, no, okay, what's, it's the 13th, 19th through the 23rd. 22nd? Okay.
Probably the evening on the 21st.
I might have JBA board. How about Monday, the 19th? Where are we out there?
I'm in Bismarck. What was the, July 28th, was there a conflict on the 28th?
Yes.
Oh.
SRCTC.
Oh.
Our annual meeting. And then you're leaving the 29th?
No, no. We leave the first.
April was gone, but is April, I can't remember, are you at the retreats all the time?
I don't have to be, no.
Got to answer those budgets.
So it's the 29th and 30th, you're gone?
Yep, I have a wedding, yep.
Okay, so, and you're gone the entire first week, and our board meeting is on Tuesday, the 10th.
Well, hold on, the 19th, that Monday, I'm in Bismarck, but what time would we meet?
That one we usually do. Yeah, an evening.
Oh, I can make it back.
No speeding tickets.
Ew.
What is that, Sunday evening, Monday routines? 7:00 to 9:00 PM or something? Put a, put an end time on it, so we, does that work? Do you want to bring supper in? We've done that, we've had the Bieber make us supper and bring that in, or just eat before you come, I don't care. That work? That's nice, we can get it done sooner rather than later. And so if you would make sure then, send us out the, the updated budget as best you can, which we may need to wait until after our Thursday noon meeting, and then we'll have an idea on the, a better idea on the AD.
With you, is it? You have one done up to today?
Yes, the budget that I posted on there is up to date. I don't, I have to check, I don't remember if I added that extra para in there. But yeah, and I would have to adjust the salary for one less science teacher. So I'll make some adjustments, but as of, be up to date as of June 30th, basically.
Okay, and where was that? Was that?
It's in the packet, because otherwise it'd be too big, so then I just, I posted separately on the packet page.
I had one that was from June 16th, so that one is in odds.
Yep.
Does that include any of the Esser funds at all, April?
No, I did not budget any of that in, either.
So that's going to be a wash, though, the dollars will come in and the dollars.
Yep, yes, yep. And it's over, it, we can use some of them till 2024, so I don't want to put the whole amount in. And, you know, so it'll be going on, so it'll be an amendment later.
Okay, and so the strategic plan is on the website in the public area. And if you can't reach it, then, you know, reach out to April and she can help you fund it. Anything else? So board retreat next Monday, 7:00 PM here. You want to eat, eat on your own, or do you want us to get a meal ready? Okay, fine with me.
So no meal?
No meal.
There's plenty of water in the fridge, okay?
Then our next regular meeting would be Tuesday, August 10th at 7:00, 8:00. And then April and I have discussed having a little new orientation with you, Monica, and we can work on that after the meeting. All right, anything else for the good of the order? Thank you all for your hard work today and here. And I'll declare the meeting adjourned at 9:58. Thank you.
First meeting, $3.